All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Greenfield Town Council, August 15, 2018, our regular meeting, 7:00 PM, Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcasted. If any other present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Madam Clerk may have a roll call of members.
Counselor Sun.
Chair.
Counselor Lobach.
Present.
Counselor Ellis.
Present.
Counselor Pisum, in his accent. Counselor Dolan.
Present.
Counselor Gilmore.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Counselor Lenovitz.
Here.
Counselor Mass.
Here.
Vice President Ricketts.
Here.
Counselor Stempel.
Present.
Counselor Sun, would you like to begin us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to remind the public of our audience that a few months ago, we did take a vote as council on the conduct of civility. So I would like, if anyone is speaking at our head table, or at public comment, that people in the audience, please respect that. Okay, our public forum, Karen Larrabee, your address, please, when you come to the table.
Hi, I'm Karen Larrabee, 24 Oakville Acres, Greenfield. And I'm currently the co-president of the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library.
Is that on?
Hit the button that says push on it.
Is it green? It is. Now it's green. Perfect.
Sorry, speaking into that.
Okay, how's that?
And Karen, you have three minutes, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm currently the co-president of the Friends of the Greenfield Public Library. And first and foremost, I want to say, hi Mom. My mom doesn't miss a school committee meeting, or a counselor meeting, and she's a model citizen, and I hope to be just like her when I grow up. But what I'm here for is to share with you what happened on Saturday, July 21, at the library. All good things. The Friends of the Library hosted a celebration for the announcement of the $9.4 million grant from the state of Massachusetts. It was a grand celebration. Hundreds of people poured through the library's doors to congratulate us and to offer support to make a new library in Greenfield a reality. We had yummy refreshments, answered many questions. We had a short program of congratulations from State Representative Paul Mark, and offered tours of the current building. On that note, if any of you would like a tour of the library, please contact our library director, Alan Boyer, and she'd be happy to accommodate you. It was an awesome party atmosphere, no shushing, and a happy and upbeat crowd, thanks to those counselors that attended, along with our State Representative of Paul Mark. I also wanted to tell you about an upcoming event, which is going to be on Wednesday, September 5, at 4:00 PM. The Friends will be conducting their annual meeting in the Levine Way Room at the library, followed by refreshments in the main lobby, and we would love it if you could join us. Thank you for serving our city. I appreciate all the time and energy you spend representing the citizens of Greenfield. Have a good night.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, in case some of you do not know, we let Greenfield residents speak first, okay? So if I skipped over you, I will come back. Ginny Disorder.
Good evening. Ginny Disorder, 43 Silvercrest Lane. I'm speaking tonight, I'm actually opposed to a vote in favor, any vote in favor of the proposed safety complex. I believe as a town that we simply cannot afford this. And I believe it's the council's job to put a hold on projects such as this. The information provided on the proposed safety complex leaves numerous questions unanswered, and the numbers keep changing. We have no DPW head, no finance director, and no chief assessor. Without leadership in these positions, I don't see how we could possibly ascertain the actual facts and figures of what this is going to cost us. This is yet another lease agreement, which in the past have resulted in enormous costs to the town. I looked closely at two large commercial lease agreements the town engaged in in the past six or seven years. One, coincidentally, had the same, a similar name to the current proposed one. And I saw how they affected us both financially and legally. Tiffs were granted as part of the lease, they still ended up in court. I'm going to cite two examples, 401 Liberty versus the Town of Greenfield, and Dyer Investment Company versus the Town of Greenfield. Results are posted on mass.gov. The town lost in both of these cases, and was required to reimburse the above companies for tax payments. Granted, this is a slightly different scenario. Still, I have many questions about a lease. At the safety complex public information meeting, it was stated that we might consider taking part of this property by eminent domain. Today, I viewed the RFP that's due to go out tomorrow at 2:00 PM, and indeed, it said that it would be a lease. Aside from all of that, however, we are one of the poorest communities in Massachusetts. Seventeen percent living below poverty level, and a mushrooming senior population who live on fixed incomes. Almost every private citizen who spoke at the public safety complex meeting was worried about the cost and their tax bills. We are a great community. We are educating our children, maintaining our infrastructure, providing avenues of diverse recreation, protecting our citizens with great fire and police departments. We received certification as a green community due to the work of many, many good people. Now, I believe we need to practice fiscal responsibility, and spend money paying off some of our bills, and stop increasing the financial burden where, for many, it has become impracticably onerous.
Joan Milnes.
Hello, Joan Milnes, 42 Silvercrest Lane. My husband and I moved to Greenfield 11 months ago to help a family member with a health issue. We currently pay $6,500 in real estate tax on our two-bedroom condo. That is more than we were paying for our three-bedroom, split-level ranch in Beverly, Massachusetts. I am against anything that's going to cause my $6,500 tax bill to increase. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sarah Pearson.
Hello. I live at 129 Hope Street. And basically, I'm just here tonight because...
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
Sorry. I'm here basically with a question as to the process of this bid. As you know, projects, public projects are, that are paid for either with town or state money, are subject to the public bidding laws, which includes a number of things, including the prevailing wage rates. And what I wonder is, by developing a building with a builder, with a known end user being the town, if that's not somehow circumventing those public bidding laws? If there was a pre-existing building that the town wanted, that fit all of their needs, that might be a different story, but because we know the town is going to be the end user, I'm just wondering if anyone's looked into the legality of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Goodman.
Hi, Wendy Goodman, 529 Green River Road, Greenfield. I'm not sure that this is the right form, because I don't want to talk about the safety thing. I want to talk about the homeless situation.
It's your three minutes, you just go.
Thank you, all right. So I want to begin by saying how proud, I'm going to cry, I was at this last meeting, at our last meeting, that I saw this community step up, and really look at a situation that was really hard, and figure out how we were going to come together, and what we were going to do to deal with a real big problem that we had, with homeless people on the Green. I was proud to be a resident, I was proud to be a citizen of Greenfield. And man, I read in the paper last week, I wrote this whole thing for the emergency meeting that was canceled. I read in the paper that our leadership has then gone circumvented the decisions that were made here to get done what was decided by one person, or a few people, that they wanted done. I'm going to go back to reading this, because... I'm so disappointed in our leadership, and angry as well. I thought that elected officials were supposed to represent their constituency. I believe the role of a leader is to lead. That involves listening and responding to the constituency. It is not to unilaterally decide what you want to decide. If my leader disagrees with me and my fellow citizens, I believe and want that person to convince me and our constituency. I do not want him or her to just go ahead and do what they decide they want to do. This whole homeless situation on the Greens begs the question to me of, who are we? What are the essential values we share? I understand we don't want to see it, but are people on the Green really causing such a problem that they should be dehumanized in this way? Are we not willing to wait to mitigate what is truly problematic, to assist those living there, while we do our best to find our alternatives? We're sending them off the Green with nowhere to go, no plan, no nothing. That's our fault, because we can't figure that out, but we're going to tell them they need to leave. This past week, after what seemed like a very successful emergency mailing, I was dumbfounded to read that the mayor, one, was critical on ServiceNet for not doing enough, and two, that the Board of Health has given an eviction date of the 20th. This doesn't look to me like collaboration or the will of the people. I thought after our last meeting that we were working together on this issue. It was clear that the town's citizenry and the town council were against just moving folks off and working on a solution. I don't have an answer, but I thought we were headed towards collaborating and finding one out. I'm furious that our leadership, who was here at last meeting, has chosen to ignore our input. How dare they circumvent the obvious will of the people so they can accomplish what they want? The vote was clearly against moving people off the Green without a viable solution for their needs, but now there's a health code violation, all of a sudden. No, that's just an angle. They can manipulate so they can get what they want, to hell with the rest of us.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Mr. Mayor, please, you've done such good things for this town. Please start collaborating with people. Please change how you deal with people. Please listen to us and try to find creative solutions.
Thank you so much. Amy Moscaterio.
Good evening, I'm Amy Moscaratolo, 43 Country Club Road. I hope that you've all read the proposed contract very, very carefully. It's really quite frightening. I did construction management for many years, and this is a really frightening contract. I want to mention also that I totally support the idea of a new library. I think it's glorious, I think we need it, but I don't think shoving it through this way is the way to do it. I think that, that building this public safety complex to accomplish the library project is not a lasting legacy that we want to leave for future generations, and educating future generations on how to be responsible. It would leave our children's children with an utterly astounding amount of debt. And it's an amount of debt that can't be sustained on the backs of residential taxpayers. I also want to remind the council that just three short weeks ago, you took a vote of no confidence unanimously in this mayor, and now you're going to be asked to allow him to move forward with this negotiation unilaterally. I think we need to think very, very carefully about what message that sends from you as a town council. Thank you.
Thank you. David Moscaterio.
43 Country Club Road. I first want to say that I am in full support of our fire personnel and our police personnel, and I think they do deserve a public safety complex. But I think we're going about it the wrong way. I passed out two, I passed out two pieces of paper to you. One was the breakdown of the total cost that we would give the landlord. And the other one was 14 most concerning elements of the proposed lease. But what I don't understand is why we're even talking about a lease. The council was supposed to be talking about deciding whether they're going to support the mayor on finding a location or not, and now all of a sudden we have drawings from a developer, and we have a developer here, and they're talking about the council negotiating a lease. That's just bizarre to me. It makes absolutely no sense. There shouldn't be a developer here, there shouldn't be a construction people here. There should be the council and the mayor, and he should have come to the board with four or five examples of, in four or five different locations, on this is what we can do for the police and fire department, and let's look at the options. But now you're faced with one option. I think that's, I think that's a violation of the state laws when it comes to RFPs. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I think it's gone about very recklessly and irresponsibly on the mayor's part. I really hope you look at these documents, I know you've probably studied this information, but I broke it down for you, and it's very simple, and you can see it. And I really think it's important to look at the top 14 concerning elements of the lease. You know, one of them is that the landlord gets all the tax benefits, and we pay all the expenses of the building. That's bizarre. I mean, and we're giving them 2% on top of the regular money every year. So how does the landlord deserve 2% when they're not maintaining the building, and they're not doing anything, they're just building the building and walking away, and collecting their money? I think we have to look at other alternatives. I think the great thing that the mayor did is he removed the two items in the resolution. The dispatch one, which gives the police chief time to work that all out, because he needs time. And the other one was, the library has nothing to do with this. With that being said, we have plenty of time to look at other locations for a public safety building. Thank you, Mayor, on that one, I appreciate it. Now I want to talk about what happened at the last council meeting. I got up and I spoke, like I always do, and I sat back down. And there was a gentleman in front of me, and when one of the counselors started asking questions about the library, he started mocking the counselor. And I asked him respectfully if he could be quiet, and while other people are talking. And he read me the riot act with every swear in the book, and called me a lot of names. And then he kept looking back at me, and then when he got up to leave, he faced me face to face, and he called me every name in the book. And I won't repeat what he called me. And some of the counselors noticed it. That is unacceptable. I'm a big boy, I can handle myself, I'm not worried about the guy. But what really bothers me is that at the next meeting, a woman came up to me and said, that this was her first meeting that she was at, second meeting, and the first one was when she saw me get belittled by this gentleman. And she said, I don't think I'd ever get up and speak at a meeting, because I saw that. That's what bothers me the most. Everybody, no matter what their religion is, what their race is, what their color is, what their economic situation is, should be able to get up here and speak freely, and they should not have to turn around and go that way to be mocked by anybody. I appreciate what you said, Penny, and I know the other counselors respect this, and are concerned about it, so I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, David. Stephen Wallace.
Hello, is this...
Your address, please, sir.
45 Bridge Street, Shelburne Falls. And so, thanks, I actually do feel comfortable making a remark up here. And I was, I was very encouraged by that near the end. And I just want to make a comment about the people on the lawn, and the conflict with the homeless controversy there. And I want to come at it from an angle that's, that's just my own. And I come as not a politically charged or politically interested person, but as a musician, and as somebody who has spent time in a position of poverty, you know. I live in an apartment now, and I get enough, and I pay rent, and I'm happy and stable. And a lot of the essence surrounding the conversation is incredibly superficial and just untrue, not in terms of political content, but in terms of how we even address the approach to this. I mean, some of these things are just untrue, or they're based on internalized prejudices, like, well, they're needles in the trash can, and these people are just unorganized, or whatever. But if you talk to these people, one night I went down there, and I played music for them. And they wanted the Moody Blues, they wanted James Taylor, they wanted Prince, they wanted Michael Jackson. And that said something to me. The next morning, I was house-sitting in Greenfield, so I was in Greenfield for these 10 days, and three or four of those days I spent on this encampment. And I saw some of the most genuine people, and the most approachable people in the entire city, you know. And they're all walking together, organized, civilized, and serious, taking themselves seriously, you know. Then, on the bus this morning, I hear the bus driver, I don't know which one, and I'm not going to mention names, but just some fella was saying, look at this, that there's mentions of how horrendously messy it is, or whatever. I go into one of the shops in town, and somebody mentions how inconvenient it was for trash to be outside of her store, and for that photo to be in the paper. But in the same breath, when she said something about, when I said something about, you know, prejudice against homeless people, and how I thought that housing was a human right, she became very humorous in an instant, and she said, at least the needles are in the trash, you know. At least they're being organized to that extent. And so I just want to address that kind of psychological dogma. I don't know anything in terms of policy, but I think that it's incredibly important that we need to do away with the dogma of saying that people need to earn their right to exist. You know, we don't have to earn our right to survival, there's enough resources on the planet to make sure that everybody can get what they need. And I think that we need to say the word "love" and not take it back. And it's not about a morality thing, it's not about shaming people, it's just about decency.
Thank you for speaking, yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Henry Albin.
Henry Albin, 171 Avenue A, Turner's Falls. I am disappointed in the town council and the mayor for the false promises that were given to the homeless. Despite the assurances the mayor gave to the Board of Health and the good intent behind them, the former CSO building will not be ready for months. And the Wedgewood Gardens is land controlled by the Conservation Commission, who have made their opinions on homeless camping clear. We are failing those residents who need us most. Thanks to the Board of Health, you have won. The homeless will be off the common. To enact an ordinance to change how the common operates is rubbing salt in an open wound, and nothing short of a rejection of the values of our city. Greenfield is my hometown. I grew up here, I work here, I've spent most of my life here. Homelessness is not a new problem. As long as it was out of sight, it could be downplayed, shrugged off as a minor issue. But the fact is that for every homeless person in view on the common, there are a dozen who aren't, hidden homeless. These are just people, these aren't just people living in tents in the woods. These are people who couch surf, stay with friends, and bounce in and out of locations with great frequency. Many of my friends in the area have at one point or another been homeless, either forced to stay a few nights on someone's couch, or, and move on before they wore out their welcome, or even living on the street or in a forementioned tent. The problem of homelessness goes far beyond what we see on the common. There is a logical fallacy frequently applied to the homeless and those in poverty. At its core, it simply states that if they actually tried and worked hard, they wouldn't be in their current situation. Neither homelessness nor systematic poverty are so easily solved. There are many inherent points of privilege which make the road out of homelessness difficult. To apply for a job, a license, school, and myriad other things in our society, you're expected to have an address, a phone, in some cases, a vehicle. Things are not, things that are not always available to the homeless, not easily achievable. This in turn creates a vicious cycle, which can enhance mental health issues such as anxiety, stress, and depression, each of which in turn can make the most simple of tasks daunting, which only feeds and reinforces the cycle. Social service agencies and religious groups attempt to help with these issues, but they can only do so much. Already beleaguered social services cannot be expected to carry the responsibility. It is a city's responsibility to care for its residents and provide them with the services they need to survive and thrive. Greenfield needs to focus on providing low-income housing, alternative housing, transportation, and addressing the underlying issues afflicting the most vulnerable in our community. They are our neighbors, friends, and family. It is our ethical and moral duty to try and help them, to raise them up, and help carry the burdens, their burdens if we are able. To falsely claim we are doing them a service by removing them from sight without addressing the root issues, and then clapping ourselves on the back for being righteous while we turn those same backs on them is nothing less than obscene and gross hypocrisy. We cannot be the land of the free and home of the brave when we are too cowardly to see the humanity in each of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I don't have anyone else that's signed up? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Your name and address, please.
David Conway, 22 Conway Drive, a precinct date. I'd like to say I appreciate everything that you do here. As a former council member and my entire family, I know how difficult it can be for you. I would like to say, number one, hearing all the stuff about the homeless. My property is, and used to be, Homeless Central. My property is and used to be homeless central. The jungle was my neighbors. In the past, we've had homeless people go down face-down, dead, on our property. I don't know. That's very disconcerting for somebody whose whole family has been dealing with the homeless their entire life and having homeless people live on their property and have to deal with it. Currently, I think that, quite frankly, they should be allowed to stay on the common. There's no reason to roust them over a health issue that, quite frankly, is the health inspector going to go and follow these people to everywhere they go in town? Because everywhere they are in town is the same violation. So, by removing them from this situation, if you can't enforce it anywhere else, you should let be where it is until you come up with a final resolution to transport these people to someplace that they should go. That's that. Number two, to come up with this as a single source to the council to try to do with a proposal with developers and everything else is just not the way it should go. There should be options put in front of you and something else besides a lease that's going to get this town into legal issues with prevailing rate wages. When this finally comes around, you're opening yourself up to a legal can of whoop-ass, okay? And quite frankly, I don't want to pay for it. And that's where it's going to come back. It's going to come back to the few thousand taxpayers in this town that pay for the actual tax dollars or going to pay for this lease debacle. And I vote that, you know, until there's more options that... Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. This time, communication from the mayor, town offices and employees.
Good evening, Madam Vice President and councilors. I guess there could be a number of different topics to begin, but I think we should start off with the homelessness issue that people are quite aware of these days. So, for an update, yes, I'll start from the Board of Health decision to claim a temporary housing situation on the town common, which results in a date to have the people relocate. We have been working with the people on the common for several weeks now. We have been partnering and collaborating with other agencies, individuals. The primary movers have been the Salvation Army, M.J. Adams from the town and myself. We've been looking for the end solution, not the beginning of the issue with relocation. We're looking to relocate individuals, been working with them. All of the 19 individuals on the site have a complete assessment that's been finished and put them into the system. That's a process that takes place. We needed the end date to encourage the providers of the relocated housing units and the people who are there, who may come there, to not see that as an entry door for housing. The common is not an entry door for housing. Homelessness has its priority in regular housing authorities, regional housing, local housing authorities, and so on. Our decision to locate some quick temporary housing has not been solidified. Several people may have thought that what I said was a permanent solution. What I said is that we would continue to look at different locations. I thought of one that was able to develop some discussion with. We're in the process of speaking with a number of people, some dedicated to that address on High Street with the state, Housing and Community Development, and others, including Service Net and Clinical Support Options. We've looked at issues with potential opportunities with Congressman McGovern's office and certainly Representative Paul Mark has been around working a number of different areas. And the options are as wide as anyone can imagine, from individual rooming home units to the Greenfield Armory. The Armory is expected to close soon. We're in discussion, trying to develop a path of communication to use that on a quick, permanent, temporary basis. We're also looking at moving people as soon as possible. So, two things. We're working for vacant units to move people. This is... We're dealing with people first. The second part is to develop a movement that will satisfy the individuals' needs as well as provide a parallel type of housing unit that is closest to their needs. And lastly, there is discussion on a number of longer-term units. We've had this discussion, if people can remember, over the decades about subsidized housing in Greenfield, about the Chapter 38B, I think, 30A, 40A, I'm sorry. Chapter 40A and the Anti-Stab Zoning Act. How Greenfield has always performed well. We are still at the 16% of our housing units are categorized as meeting the state standard, which is supposed to be 10%, and most communities fail to get close to that. So, we do our part and we always have. We'll continue to work on the homelessness with the specific issues for the common. So, I don't know what else I can do. I've always been available for anyone that would like to offer solutions or housing units in the form of a room or an apartment. There's a lot more to it than just moving a person into a vacant apartment. And we're intending on providing the support services that go with the resident. And we'll take questions on that after, if you'd like. I know I didn't get a chance till late this afternoon to read Counselor Dolan's proposed resolution. I can say that I did come to the council last month with a full plan. When the council didn't discuss it, I continued with the plan because we can't wait for a lot of discussion when these people have to do something. So, we're continuing with that plan. I would suggest that we continue to do that. I am not in favor and do not support opening up other encampments around town. Mr. Conway speaks to that issue very clearly. There are... His location has been used by a number of people over the years. I guess we'll talk about the Public Safety Complex then, but during the Ways and Means discussion, there was a focus on Chapter 149. I wanted to repeat to all the councilors and the people who were there then that Chapter 149 is part of the RFP. Our last communication with Attorney General's Office was June 22 of this year. We've identified three areas in which they would like concrete and definitive responses. If the council wants me to continue to work on negotiation with this particular property, then I will work toward that end. If the council does not want me to work and to negotiate on this property, then we have a lot of time and resources we can devote to something else. Are there any questions?
Counselor Mass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say, having spent many nights sleeping in temporary housing in the Greenfield Armory, that may be a good location for an emergency temporary shelter. I don't know about long-term, but on an emergency basis. I have a number of questions to continue to ask from Ways and Means where I left off. I don't know if you need your whole team.
I... Yeah, I would like the whole team because they brought different things to the table.
Yeah.
But we're going to speak about the resolution later in the agenda.
Well, my understanding is that's a discussion amongst the council. I want to ask questions of the mayor before that discussion.
Okay. Counselor Alice.
Yeah, point of information. Is it possible to potentially save that till after we've heard from the other department heads but prior to our deliberations? Just so that... I have other questions of the mayor as well, and I was just hoping maybe we could get that out of the way and then have them all up. Maybe if that's acceptable to you, Vice President.
Yep, that's fine. I think maybe at this time, I'd like the office of procurement to come forward so that... Counselor Mass, we could ask some of those questions to the mayor and to Ms. Lamonte. And then, we'll hear from...
I'm not sure I have procurement questions, so I'll...
I have one or two questions for the procurement officer, and that's why I asked for her to be here. Can you... Do we have any opinions on whether this particular project falls under procurement law, which I believe is 30B, correct? Or is it 32B?
The lease.
Speak into the mic, sorry.
Okay. The lease itself falls under 30B, okay? However, because of the length of the lease and there are provisions in the RFP, which I assume all of you have read, that refer to Chapter 149. Now, I can't speak to the pricing of the lease or anything, but we are working with the Attorney... Yeah, the Attorney General's Office to make sure that we're in compliance.
Follow-up?
Yeah.
Counselor Alice.
Is it true that if the building... If any building is to be built specifically for an entity that has to go through 32B and prevailing wage, that they have to follow 32B and prevailing wage? Do you know the answer to that question?
If a town is being constructed specifically for municipal use, it does fall under Chapter 149.
Okay. Okay. The further... My other question for you as procurement officer, if the town paid for design work, if the town... Because I know you may not know specifically what was paid for, but if the town paid for design work that was then submitted with an RFP from a developer, would that mean that the project was a city municipal project, construction project?
That's an excellent question, and I would really have to double-check to make sure I give you the right answer. I don't just want to make an assumption.
Okay, if you could, that'd be great.
Yep.
And my last question, if we enter into a 30-year lease, knowing full well that we're really only doing a 10-year lease, does that... Would that, in your opinion, as a procurement officer, suggest that it was a construction project of the municipality?
Again, great question. I don't want to make any assumptions because...
No, absolutely. Thank you.
You know, the RFP is really quite clear on what it's for, and the rules are laid out right there. So, I can't speak to the pricing on it, but I can ask the Attorney General's Office to make sure that, you know, we're in compliance.
Actually, I have one final because she did mention something that reminded me of a question. So, if an RFP goes out and comes back to the town different than it went out, do... Is there... At what point is it not necessary to allow other people to try and bid on that RFP that is now no longer the same as it went out?
An RFP is... They can... You can negotiate. And that... I mean, that's part of doing the RFP. So, the town has the ability to negotiate until it comes to a point where everybody agrees. It doesn't have to go back out, essentially. And we only had the one responder, right?
Right, but we only had one respondent who negotiated something different than we sent to everyone who could have responded. That's my question.
No, no. We had one respondent to this RFP.
So, we marked up the RFP with pencil.
As a part of the negotiation.
Prior to sending it out to be bid on or after sent...
No.
So, it was marked up after we sent it out to be bid on?
Because that was part of the negotiation.
Okay. I feel like it's a circle, so I'm trying to understand.
Okay.
At what point is it... At what point, under procurement law, is it legal for us to change the RFP and not send it for a rebid?
That's an excellent question. I don't...
So, but somebody has to know because that's what we did.
Right. Well, no, because it's still under negotiation. Okay? We had one respondent, and we're negotiating with that respondent. So, until either party walks away, then it's still under negotiation.
So, if there's only one respondent to an RFP, all bets are off. We can do whatever we want in a negotiation. Is that...
Not necessarily. You know, we're trying to accomplish a project, okay? In this case, building a public safety complex. You can continue to negotiate to meet that objective until either party walks away or comes to a...
Can you give me an example? And maybe you can't today, but if there's a... Can you give me an example of another project where we sent out an RFP and it came back in a different form, but there was more than one bidder?
I'm not aware that this came back in a different form.
Well, all I know is that I've seen what's on the internet, on the town's website, and I see what's in the packet. And the one in the packet is marked up with pencil. It's all marked up. Everything has changed in it. The square footage has changed, what we're doing has changed.
If they had put it on a separate piece of paper, it still would have been considered part of the negotiation. Now, if, you know, there's always the opportunity to say, "We're not accepting anything," revise and go back out. There's always that opportunity.
Okay. I don't... I'm still trying to understand, but I'll... Maybe someone else can ask a question.
Yeah. Any other councilors have a question? And then I'll let you continue again. Counselor Mass.
Just on that point, because I think I know what Counselor Alice is getting at. When does it become best practice to walk away and rebid? At what point is it when there's a substantial change? Is there a rule of thumb as to when we might think that a revised RFP might attract more bidders?
Maybe we get a question from the responder, and then you have to give that information to all.
That answer could come from the mayor or the procurement office.
Yep.
Mayor Martin, you may answer.
When an RFP goes out to bid, there is an opportunity for questions from anybody and everybody, okay? And they have to be submitted in writing. And then, we would respond to that to anybody, any all-known potential bidders. That's the avenue that we have, and those instructions are included in the RFP. Now, your question is, you know, how small can we make this building before we go back out? Something along those lines? How many changes can we make?
Yeah. My question is, at what point is it the best practice that you've gone so far away from your initial RFP? And I'm not saying that happened in this case. But at what point have you gone so far away from your RFP that it's advisable, it's a best practice, it may not be the law, but it's the best practice to seek additional bids?
Yep.
If we're going to do a library there, it would be a change of use.
You? Okay. You can answer that if you want.
One major difference would be if we were to go for and say, "Well, convert that 50,000 square feet to a library." That would be a change. So, it's a specified use as a public safety. If we went and changed it to multifamily, it's a change. So, the only RFP is in that small tunnel of public safety. And so, when, like we did with the high school, if the price comes in and the design comes in, and then if it's too much, it's too high, you have to value engineer down. And then, if you still want to keep it at some point in the future, maybe if you can get in to keep it in the budget, you put it as an alternative. And then, at the end of the time, at the end of the analysis of the project, you take all the alternative ideas you've had, and then you prioritize them. Once they're prioritized, then that's the only way you can put them back into the project. So, with the single responder, the sole bid, we were trying to... The location was number one. We were trying to bring it in line with how we were going to do it. And like the high school, again, the rehab was just too expensive. So, then we converted to new construction, same site, same purpose.
Counselor Mass, do you have a follow-up?
I just want to make sure I under... I just want to make sure I understand. I think what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure you will, is that as long as the intended use doesn't change, no matter how much the structure changes or the dimensions change, that there's no reason to believe that, that, that a substantial change in the design or the, or the request other than the use would produce additional bidders?
Yeah, well, in the original RFP, Audrey can address that better than I can, but in the original RFP, our, our requests for, from fire, dispatch, and police exemplified exactly what we needed for space. And that's what went in the RFP. We only had one bidder for that space and that, that particular use. And even though the space may shrink, it's, it doesn't, the, the difference becomes, we're only looking for space. If the space shrinks, then is it the space we still want? So to answer your question, when does it be, when do you walk away, as Audrey said? Now is the walk-away period. I've come to you with a resolution. Do you want me to continue? Do you want me to continue to negotiate this, taking in all the comments of everybody here and the, everything from the recorder, Facebook, and public comment, and try to get closest to that lease that, that meets everyone's needs, or do you want it to stop? That's all.
Counselor Alice?
So there's no point at which if you do anything more than 25% either size or cost change, that you have to put it out to bid, no matter how many bidders there are?
There's a rule of thumb that, in construction, and if the construction cost is 25% or greater, then you need to go out to bid. But that's just a rule of thumb, it's not a hard and fast rule, because there are unknowns. So for example, if, say, we did some renovations to the town hall roof, we ran into some asbestos issues, we didn't even know they were there, that was an additional cost that went a little bit above the 25%, but because it was an unknown item, we didn't have to rebid it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there, there is, there's a rule of thumb for 25%, but I don't think we're there yet.
No, I, I didn't say that we were, I just was trying to figure out if, I was just trying to get to the, to the...
Oh, yeah, Bendix, we're going to talk about Bendix.
One, one more question.
Counselor Alice, go ahead.
So if the RFP went out with drawings for this specific building, was it reasonable to think that we would have anyone else come back with a bid?
Yeah, why not? Yeah, there's a couple other locations, but...
No, no, but the drawings that went out with the RFP, those drawings right there, which are in the RFP, are of this particular building?
They're from the slab up, so they could go any, any site.
On the, on the corner of Main and Wells. We only have one corner of Main and Wells in Greenfield, right?
I might be missing a piece, but I'm just looking at, from the RFP, I'm just looking at the space requests.
So that might be a good technical question to ask the group that we're with, because they follow the RFP and the law very closely.
Okay. I'll, I'll hold that for the, for the rest of the folks, though.
Thank you. That's all my procurement questions.
Okay. Do any other counselors have questions? Counselor Mayo?
Mr. Mayor?
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Can you tell me who's part of the negotiation team for the town regarding the RFP?
It, it involves DPW, procurement, legal at times, communication with AG.
Public Safety Committee.
Public Safety Committee. There was actual, you have to address that with Public Safety, but there was a task force out of Public Safety that addressed the Public Safety Complex too. And he'll have, he could have the members of that group, the review committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The RFP Review Committee, I didn't know the two women's names.
Okay. Counselor Dolan?
Can I just clarify one thing, and I'm still very much getting accustomed to this RFP process, but that drawing right there predates the RFP itself. Is that what I'm to understand?
The renderings?
Yes. Am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, I, I haven't seen those renderings before. That, that's the Garden Theater and that's the Town Hall.
That's the Public Safety.
Right, but I mean, it's, the architecture is a combination of the Garden Theater and the courthouse on Federal Street, upper, I mean, Upper Main Street. And the, and the other part is the Town Hall, maybe...
Are you talking about the floor plans?
Yeah.
Floor plans or the...
Pardon. I didn't come on till after, so I'm a little in the dark. I mean, I'm willing to check anything out that you want, but I'm very...
Counselor Alice?
When the group comes up here.
Sorry, Mayor.
I, I think what the question is, is these, these are the Public Safety Complex drawings, and that rendering is what the Public Safety Complex will look like. But those were, I'd, I'd love to know the exact date that those were done, because I, we paid for them. So Counselor Dolan's question was, was, were they done prior to the RFP?
Okay, you can bring that up with the group.
Okay. I'm, I'm ready to bring the group forward unless you have...
I have other questions not related to this, so I'm sorry that, I thought we were just going through procurement first, so that Audrey could, could go home. I have other questions for the mayor.
Yeah.
So if, if I can ask my other questions, then I'd, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, for, for coming, I appreciate it. Mayor, at last month's meeting, I referenced a statement that you had made about getting an invoice and a, a copy of payment for some meters that were essentially being bagged by the DA's office movers, and you had told me that you would get that to me. Do you have that?
The, no, I don't. No, I don't. But bringing up the date on that, those are going to be new striped parking spaces going down...
I'm sorry, this is on Main Street. This was the incident on Main Street where they were taking up parking spots for a meeting that we were having. And there was an issue where I had parked in a parking spot, and I was told to move out of the parking spot. And after the meeting, you had suggested to me that you would find out and get the invoice for the fact that they had essentially bagged the meters so that people could not park there all day. You had suggested that you would get me that information. The, the other spots are a whole nother conversation that I'm not prepared to have tonight, but...
So maybe, give that to me in writing again, and give it to Mark and I so we can follow up.
Okay. That was my, that was my first question. I have another, not a follow-up to that, that's fine with that.
Could I call on Counselor Dolan first, and then I'll come right back to you?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I would like to change the subject to the homelessness situation, is that okay?
To the mayor?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure what.
That's fine, but I believe we're going to come back to this Public Safety question. We have many questions still, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wanted to come back to this, those 19 people who are sleeping on the Common are my constituents, the Common's in Precinct 5.
They're all our constituents.
Of course. I've heard a lot of ideas thrown around over the last month, and now the deadline, as we know, is very close. Can I have a reasonable assurance that all of those people will have a roof over their heads on the evening of the 20th?
Certainly not. We've already heard some rejections from some of the people there. So there's no way we're going to satisfy what one or two people may want. At a meeting yesterday, it was, it was pretty much understood that some people are not going to accept anything just to want it, they want to stay outside. And we can't force them to go into housing. We can provide choices, that's what our objective is, with support services, including maybe rental assistance, depending on a number of negotiations and discussions going on.
Can I follow up?
Go ahead. And then Counselor Gilmore after Counselor Dolan.
Is there, is there a written plan somewhere for which spaces are going to be used, what the options are? Is there some kind of document that we can look at detailing these housing options?
Sure. I think if you'd like to come in and work with us on this, you can, you can take one of the tentacles of the plan and, and go out and do it. That's what we're doing. When people, when people are providing an ideas and then trying to cultivate that idea, you don't always have the plan. But for one building on High Street, we've been in discussions, presented budgets, cooperated with another agency, an estate agency. So when that happens, we'll all know at the same time.
But that's not happening by the 20th?
Probably not.
Can I have one more follow-up? I spoke with Paul Mark about a week ago, and he mentioned to me that folks from Greenfield had not been in touch with him about resources from the state. So you, you said you'd spoken to him and Representative McGovern. Would you provide some details about what sorts of resources and funding might be available from those two avenues?
Yeah, so first with Paul, I haven't spoken with him, but I, if you remember, I stated he's been involved in doing some legwork in Boston, working with other people. Congressman McGovern is in Honduras, I think, and when I spoke with John Ochuski, John is, is working and communicating with the adjutant regarding the armory. And I spoke with DHC Secretary Jay Ash. I called him one morning, and he called me back in a couple hours, and we immediately worked on some type of solution, which involved the suggestion that I had made, that we would clinical support options to take this property on High Street to become immediate temporary housing. So that takes, once you get an idea, then you see if there's some reinforcement of the idea, and then you do a program, which often includes a budget and a proposal and an end. So we're not doing it. Greenfield does not have a housing department. We don't have any staff. We don't have any rental assistance programs. We don't have any social service programs. We have programs and services for employees. And then we have a number of departments that take care of our residents. So all I can say is that it's in the process. I don't know what type of plan you're looking for. We're, we're looking for results, and those results will come from our efforts. I think everyone's getting a little anxious for the August 20th date. Probably if they are not relocated by at least a good 50 to 60%, then the cease and desist on October, August 20th cannot take place. So we're continuing to work with these people, move them. We just can't have any more people moving to the Common.
Can I have one more?
One second. Let me, let Counselor Gilmore come in.
Okay, I'm not changing the topic.
Could you get really close?
Yes. So community support options has been occupied until very recently. So I don't understand what sort of work needs to go into the building to make it habitable again. I thought that they would be able to move in fairly quickly.
So your question is?
My question is, what is it that I don't know about the CSO building that's preventing them from moving in quickly?
Okay, well, it's been vacant, it's been vacant for several months. So a lot of things have been shut off. It needs to be cleaned, all the safety features have to be tested, and the, the four bathrooms, they can only handle four per, four people per bathroom. So whether employees are going to be there, then you lose a percentage of a bathroom, and then you can't have as many occupants. The question is, there's, furniture is pretty much gone. There has to be furnishings and fixtures brought in, there has to be a new setup for the 24/7 monitoring that goes on in the building. And again, all the fire and safety and other features have to be covered, including parking and cleaning, painting, that type of thing. It's not serious. The building inspector's been through, health inspector goes through tomorrow, fire has been through. Everything seems to be in order and waived to the point that it's grandfathered, so it doesn't need something new, because it's already been in use within two years.
All right, a quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
Do you have any kind of timeframe on that?
I was told it would take three to four weeks to get it done, but it's taking a little bit of time to get the budget approved.
Counselor Mass?
Briefly on this topic, you're, Mr. Mayor, the, you have been quoted, and I think I remember hearing, hearing you say, the possibility of allocating $9,000 to $12,000 for your shepherding project to connect these people to, to services. My only question is, where, what is the source of those funds? I've had that question from constituents, and I don't know the answer.
Yeah, so that's, that's $9,000 to $12,000, $11,000. That's not per person on the Common. That's, that's to hire someone who has experience in working with the assessment process and relocating people from one place to another, who also understands the accessories or assisting services required for some of the population we're dealing with. We are dealing with a challenged group, behavioral group, that's the fact we have to deal with. And that's, these people who is going, are going to help, will be working with Captain Peabody, and we have to do it on, we feel, on an individual basis to help each different type of circumstance.
Okay, follow-up. Go ahead, Counselor Mass.
Mayor, while I appreciate all that was totally non-responsive to my question, it was, my question is, what is the source of funds?
Okay, the source of funds is unrestricted program funds. Those are block wrap monies that certainly MJ can explain at any time, but...
You mentioned being concerned about results, and that's absolutely what I'm concerned about as well. Is there a way that you could provide us with some sort of report on how many folks are in temporary housing by, after the 20th, just because we do have this deadline kind of looming over our heads?
I could even, you know, do it more often than that, actually. You know, we were able to move, or Captain Peabody was able to relocate two people into a program, I mean, that's good. And then we have a family we're working with, and there's some good signs there. So it's, anytime, it's, we're working with 19, 17...
Yeah. Can I follow up?
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Dolan, then Counselor Stempel.
Sorry, I just want to zoom out. First of all, I appreciate all of your efforts. I know this, this is a difficult situation for all of us. I think one of the, one of the common themes that I've seen in reading case studies of successful, successful housing projects like this, or successful instances where cities have been successful in creating shelter for this demographic. There's been strong leadership from the town, and so I appreciate what you're saying, that we don't have a health, a housing department, we don't have anything formal in place. But can you talk about how you envision, like, what is the role of the town government going forward? We're not going to solve homelessness tomorrow or by the 20th, so what can we do as a government to be helpful to this problem long-term?
And I think, I think that's a great question. And so the, the, the opportunity for longer-term care, we might call it, and developing long and permanent housing is, is a number of different ways. And I would say that we should have, we should look at our zoning. Our zoning is an issue for frontage and number of units per, per frontage feet with water and sewer and square footage on land. We should also look at the, some programs, some DHCD, there's a smart growth program where if somebody's going to, which happens a lot, if somebody's going to do development right sales on a piece of property, that the housing that could have been built there is then moved to a bank in the town. And when there's a development that's going, being proposed for, say, 25 units, then they could have 10 more. So you create more housing units, because you're, while we, while we take so much land off of our roster and our inventory, we're losing housing units, we're losing revenue, we're losing opportunities for anything from startup farm businesses, whether they're marijuana or anything else, and... or anything else. We've got a lot of issues, I think, to deal with, to the zoning, commercial and industrial zoning. We only have about 360 acres each, and probably close to 25% on one and 35% on the other is unusable. If we're going to continue to live 100 years from now, we should plan for bringing in businesses, younger people, and to use our great schools and our great public safety complex.
Thank you.
Counselor Stempel?
Just to cap this conversation, I just want a clear understanding of what the expectation, what does the August 20th date mean? What is the expectation that will, what will happen on the 20th? Like, what is your expectation for the cease and desist?
Yeah, I think there's a legal path that would probably be started because of the lateness of the year. Then there is the opportunity to accelerate the urgency of the date brings, you know, brings people to a better, better place. And so hopefully that we will be able to move everyone by shortly after the 20th. I can't give a date. As soon as I hear about the 14, 15 units, then we would really get closer to a date.
Just clarification of the legal path.
Well, I think we have some attorneys that are familiar with the process, so we would have to, and I'd rather leave that up to Chief Hague, there's a process for acting on a cease and desist.
And I'm sure Chief Hague will act responsibly and respectfully, because that just concerns me, that there's a legal path, wherein I think if we're working to find solutions and perhaps...
Yeah, I'm not really talking about individual legal stuff.
Just checking. Yes, I will.
Grand.
Chief Hague, would you like to come to the table? I wasn't even going to call...
Pretty sure that's a no.
Did I drop your name? I'm sorry about that.
Just kidding. So when you're dealing with the Board of Health, and that's what I assume we're all talking about here, that's a Superior Court review, as I'm sure Attorney Mass can agree with me on. So it's not as simple as, you know, a cease and desist happens, and you're just, 9:00 AM, you're gone. So this is a Board of Health code, state code. So that's, that's the immediate path.
Does anyone have questions for Chief Hague? Counselor Sun?
Also, as far as, you know, the fire, fire and, fire, do you look at other houses, you know, that are town-owned or, you know, are condemned, are not fire safety but could possibly be redone so it'd be safe for occupancy?
I would have to wait for the fire chief.
Oh, the police, you know, as far as the police go too...
We don't interfere with the fire service.
I just...
Sorry.
Safety.
Counselor Dolan?
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you, because, you know, I've been, I've been talking to the folks on the common, and I've been, you know, reading things in the newspaper and reading things on social media, and everybody has excellent things to say about your officers in terms of how they've handled this situation. So I really appreciate that. I've been trying to figure out what exactly the Eighth Amendment implications of this Board of Health move will be in terms of, there is no other legal place to sleep in public. So how do you plan to approach those folks who are not housed but can no longer live on the common?
I guess we have to look at that as a case by case. I can't give you a blanket answer for that.
I understand. I'm trying to figure it out, too.
Are there any other questions? I would like to thank you, Chief Hague. Any other questions? Okay, Counselor Mass?
Questions related to bonding. I don't know if you want to bring up the finance director at this time, or if you want to do that.
Okay.
I have two issues that are not bonding, and I do have some bonding questions. May I ask those first questions in bonding before we go to bonding?
Okay. Counselor Alice?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have two questions that don't relate to bonding. First one is, actually, I only have one because one of them is related to bonding. I had a constituent come to me in regards to the helipad at the hospital. Well, actually, it's on hospital land, but the approach apparently is on some town land. What I was told was that our former town engineer had told the hospital they had to find a new location to put a helipad because that one is no longer, MedStar came in, wouldn't land there, had to land in the field, and told the hospital they couldn't land on the helipad anymore because it was in need of imminent repair. And that the approach to the helipad has a certain number of feet that the town owns, and that the town engineer stated that they would need to find a new place because we no longer wanted them to use town land. Is that accurate at all?
Well, like, most second-hand, right-hand...
You'd have to speak in the...
Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking you. I just want to make sure that...
That's partially true and partially inaccurate. So the pilots of the helicopters determined that the landing pad was inadequate for them to land, and they didn't work on a land there anymore. They also noted that the coming approach was, was not in the best spot with the playground and the building and the tree. So the, the south, the southwest corner of the helipad is owned by Greenfield, a slice of that. It's not owned by the school. I mean, it's not owned by the hospital. So in the past couple of years, we've discussed of transferring that land to the hospital so they would have a helipad on their own property. But with the new discussion by the pilots, that didn't make any sense because there was not going to be no, no improvement in their approach and no improvement with the playground there and the school still there. So the hospital has actually, Fire Chief Strand has been negotiating and discussing the situation with them, and the hospital's going to move the helipad.
Do you know where they're, I mean, so they're...
On their own land. I don't know exactly where they're going on their own property.
Okay. So yeah, actually, my other question is a bonding question, so that was all I had other than that.
Mr. Bond? I'll do my best.
Steven is 007 Bond.
Okay. Have we all met? Would you like to introduce him to everyone first, although I've already met him in spitting image of your...
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is, I thought everyone knew Steven. This is Steven Nemberkow. He's the business manager for the Greenfield Public School System. He's also, well, he can speak to himself.
Is it Nemberkow?
Nemberkow, yeah, yeah. And, and a business manager for the school system, been here about six weeks. For the past couple of weeks, have just been kind of filling in the finance department, keeping that department kind of above water, working on a few projects, making sure things are get done, things are still being paid, things in that order. So I will do my best to answer your bonding questions, but if I say that I need to look into it, I will look into it.
Counselor Mass?
Most of these questions are probably for the mayor to answer, but I want him to have the ability to have you. First of all, let me say welcome to Greenfield.
Thanks, thanks.
I had the great privilege of working with your father when he was the school superintendent on the old 27 member council. I did not know how good we had it at that time. I have come to deeply, I did at that time deeply respect him, even more so today. Mr. Mayor, I sent you a series of questions. You sent those responses in, and so I have follow-ups based on those. The first two questions were about some conflict between the former finance director and you over the course of how we got to the point where we didn't bond last year and did short-term borrowing instead. She indicated that she asked you, and you told her not to. You indicated that you were never asked and that you never received this stuff until it comes back from bond council. Why didn't we bond last year?
I do recall a bit of this discussion a couple months ago, was it? The, I don't make the bonding question, I don't make the bonding order. It was discussed between the treasurer, I believe, and the accountant and myself. And their, their solution for the situation at the time was to bond in June, I think it was June.
So you didn't instruct them not to bond and to do a temporary bargaining?
No, I never instructed the accountant or the treasurer to do anything because I don't sign a check and I don't approve a check.
I have a whole series of these. I don't know if...
Just bonding questions?
Yeah, they're all bonding questions.
Okay, so before you ask your next question, I just want to say, I was on school committee at the time your dad was here. I don't quite know what it meant. It was really good because we have a great superintendent, so you're going to like working for her.
We do have a great superintendent, yes.
Go ahead, Counselor Mass.
I agree, we do have a great superintendent. I still am very fond of busts. The answers that you gave us include that the financial guideline is to maintain debt between 5% and 10% of the general fund. That's correct. Is that the guideline that you follow? 5% to 10% of the general fund is what should be bonded, no more than that?
I'd have to check the financial policy.
But that, if it's in your answer, it's correct, right? What you gave to us?
Yes.
Okay. And you told me, so you have 33 million, 33.9 million and change, 28 point, 2.8 million change on enterprise, and then enterprise debt of 2.8 million, and water debt of 2.7 million and change, coming into a total of 39.5 million approximately of current outstanding debt. Is that correct?
I can't answer that. When you, I'll come back some other time with the up-to-date documents.
Were they corrected, were they corrected this time that you gave it to us?
What's the date of the answer?
It doesn't have a date on it, but you provided it to me at the last special meeting of the town council, when I asked for the answers. I had missed a...
Okay, so whatever I replied with is the information I had at that time.
And it says that we have short-term bands totaling 19.35 million? That would be correct at that time?
It would be correct. Whatever's on there, it was correct at that time.
So my calculate...
That information would have obviously not come from me. It comes from the accountant office or the treasurer's office.
But you verified it correctly before you provided it to us.
You know, even though the mayor might seem an impotent and a bully-like person, that's not the fact. The fact is, I depend on the people around me, and I hope they are experts, as I expect them to be, and professionals. So that's the information I have. I stand by the information they have given me.
So when I add the short-term borrowing that hasn't been bonded yet to our existing borrowing, that comes to 10.36, which is over the total within your guidelines for borrowing of the general fund. Does that concern you?
I'll talk with the treasurer. She's the one that put those together.
You also have an additional $15 million that is authorized but not expended. Would you, would you anticipate spending the authorized money that hasn't been expended if we're over the guidelines?
Counselor Mass, let me, I don't have those documents in front of me, nor do I have the advice of the person who obviously has put those numbers together. And if you're so familiar with them, more so than I am, then I certainly thank you for doing that. So if you have an opinion, I'll accept that. Otherwise, I need to speak with people who are handling the finances for the town of Greenfield.
How often?
Steven is not, Steven is not up to that level.
I wouldn't expect him to know.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, how often are you speaking to the people who are running the finances of the town?
And who might that be?
I don't know. Can you tell me who it is?
It's becoming confrontational. So I speak with, I speak with the, getting reports on a quarterly and monthly basis, getting municipal reports, speak with the general administration person, Mark Smith, and more recently, a lot more often with the assistant accountant and Steven. As well as the assessment office, where most of the revenue is generated, the assessors' office, met on a regular basis with the former retired director. Did you have a specific question, like, do I meet enough with the people in finance?
Counselor Mass, I was wondering at this time if you wanted to give that document to the town clerk to have her scan it and send it to the mayor's office and let him look at it with his financial team?
This document was...
Or did you want to keep doing it? Because I feel like he's given you the same answer, but you're still asking the question over and over. So just try to be clear how we could process this.
I'd like to continue to ask Vice President Ricketts, and the reason I would is because this document was actually provided by the mayor to the county clerk's office. So he has this, he may not have brought it with him tonight. He provided it to me and said he provided it to the full council at the last, the meeting before the last meeting. Mr. Mayor, you say that when, when I asked the question, what is the remaining unauthorized, unspent debt, and how will it affect, affect the tax rate? You said you haven't determined how it'll affect the tax rate, what the, the outstanding debt. You haven't done any calculations as to that?
I don't recall, and I would, I would adhere to the vice president's message is to, if you can give me that back with your questions, I can look them up and answer your questions.
I guess I've already given it to you, Mayor. And so my question is, why don't you know how this is going to affect the tax rate?
Why don't I know the debt?
Yeah, how the unauthorized but unspent debt, how it will affect the tax rate? Have you considered that at all, at any time in the past?
We've often, I think we do it once a year, we do the rescission, so that affects the tax rate. So money that you've allocated to us and for different projects, and when they're, when it's unspent, it's still authorized, and we rescind it and go back. Often times, I rescinded 60, 80 million dollars, I'm sorry, 60, 80, $680,000 and more to, and then present at the same time, new projects with new borrowing.
But if it's spent, it actually adds to the tax rate, correct?
When it's spent.
Okay, and you don't know how, what $15 million would do to our tax rate? If you did spend it?
Well, I know that $835,000 in new growth is $40 million in actual increase in the tax base.
And Mayor, it is...
So do you want to reverse that to taxes? That'll be a calculation I can't do off my head right now.
Mayor, I asked you how much debt will be retired this year, and you said that you don't know. You said undetermined by treasurer, determined by treasurer, undetermined. Did you ask the treasurer for how much debt will be retired this year in response to this question? And how do you not know how much debt will be retired this year?
Have you seen our debt chart?
That, I was expecting an answer based on the debt chart to this question, but you said you don't know.
Well, I don't know. There are dozens of bonds and borrowings out. I don't know the exact date and debt payment. We can find that out with the accountant. Was she here when that question was asked?
I gave this to you, Mayor. It's up to you to find, get the answers within your administration. I, the...
I know.
So you've answered my questions, Mr. Mayor. I understand that you don't know the answers to these questions.
At this time, thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else other than that paper that you wanted to ask the mayor? Or Mr. Nemberkow was still here, only related to the lease. Okay, so we'll wait till we bring everyone forward, and Counselor Alice on this? Okay?
So I too welcome. I know you're walking into a very difficult position because I, anyway, I served on the council, and your father was the superintendent at the time. So my question is, along those same lines, we have short-term bands out there. We appropriated, I believe, approximately $30,000 to $40,000 for short-term interest on those short-term bands. Is that going to cover, is that, is that amount of money that we appropriated going to cover the full amount of the payments? Because it seems to me that that's woefully inaccurate for the amount of bands that we have out and the amount of interest we're going to have to pay. Do you know the answer to that?
No, I don't. But you seem to have raised some flags, and I'll speak with the treasurer, who may be on vacation this week, and, and work through that, your questions.
I guess, my next question is, is for the acting finance director. Where are we, right, when you came in, where are we in the process of all of our year-end closings of all of our books and whatever else is necessary to get a tax... our books and whatever else is necessary to get a tax rate set and do all of those things?
Yeah, we're working right now on a couple of things, number one, cash reconciliations, we're a little bit behind, so that's happening right now, as well as posting revenues, especially the July 30th revenues, so that has been done. So now, the FY19 budget has been loaded into the MUNIS system, we do need to load the school budget into the FY19, FY19 school budget into the MUNIS system, so once that is done, we can begin with the closeout process. As you know, I'm up against some very hard deadlines with state reporting, things like that, so this needs to get done within the next few weeks, because I have hard deadlines of October 1st to me, on the school side.
So what is your understanding of how long you'll be working as a temporary employee of the town?
My understanding from the very beginning was about three to six weeks, I'm up to week two and a half now, hopefully, it'll just be another couple more weeks, frankly, you know, it is somewhat exhausting, I'm missing my family a little bit, so I think three, about four, four weeks or so is fair, and you know, and what I wanted to do was pitch in, you know, I'm here to help.
Yeah, no, I'm just very concerned for you, if you're working, you know, 20 hours a week for us and 40 hours a week plus for the school side, that's not fair to you, you didn't, that's not what you signed on for, so I, I'm sorry that you're put in that position. I have one, one more question for...
Okay, Counselor Alice, go ahead.
How much money is left, and this could be for either of you, how much money is left in the Finance Director, or the Finance, whatever the line item is for that department?
Yeah, actually, I did some work on that the other day, and as of now, we have, let's see here, $8,000 left in that account, and that's with all the salaries encumbered for that office.
Through what date?
Through June 30th.
Speak of the mic, Mr. Nembokow, please.
I'm sorry, June 30th, that's through June 30th.
Through June 30th of, so that...
FY19, 2019.
So that's all, including what we're paying you, is that correct?
That, that does not include what we're paying me, at my rate that I'm going right now, $8,000 is more than enough to cover that.
Okay, and that includes, Mayor, the severance package?
That includes...
Not your severance package?
No. That includes a full...
I mean, maybe yours, I don't know.
A full encumbrance of that salary, yes.
So let me just say that...
So if that includes that salary, how are we going to function until June 30th if there's only 8,000 left in that account and we don't have that position filled?
Yeah, so immediately after probably July 10th or so, I don't know the date, but we identified seven, seven different departments that were having issues with understaffing and under budget. One of them, of course, was the Clerk's Office, when we had a rotation of positions, that department now is in good shape, the last vacant position is nearly filled, the interviews have been complete, and there's a letter of conditioned employment being sent. The other department was the Assessment Department with the retirement, and so movement of job description, so we signed a contract with RRG to be Assessment Services for the City of Greenfield, that's come in, and that assessment process has begun, there is a vacant position to be advertised within the, within the city through HR, and there is enough money for that position, and there's a balance left for the floater position that is vacant. The next department that is Accounting Department, that is the number one most crisis department, the compensated absences account will be addressed for that department because of the, and I'll come to the council for that, for the buyback for the Elizabeth Brachi, the Accountant Director, or Town Accountant. And lastly, the, we'll be coming before the Town Council for funds for that department to carry us through the year. The other, DPW is another department that is understaffed, we've had a retirement and a resignation, we also had four vacancies within the DPW department itself, three of those four have been filled, and they're in the process of what's called onboarding, coming on, and there's one vacant position. There is Economic Development and Marketing has an issue with the block grant, and there's some movement into the Inspections Department, so both the Health Department with the cut by the council of $52,000, and the cut of, I think, $22,000 in the Inspection Building Department has caused some issues there, we had resignation, and then we had a relocation, a person resigned, went to another job, so what we might have had at the time the budget was cut and planned for, we now have less people, before the last relocation or retirement, resignation, the person took another job in another town, that was going to bring about cuts in that department because there wasn't enough to carry through. Right now, we're working and trying to bring that department up to balance, so I meet on at least three or four times a week on each of these departments to make sure there's going to be no issue in the coming months.
Counselor Alice, do you have a follow-up?
Yep. So I heard all of that, I'm hoping maybe you can provide us with some documentation of all that, where the money's coming from, what we're going to be doing, how we're going to be funding these things, because it's clearly significantly different than the budget that we approved, and I'd just like to see, I'd like to see what the, what the effects of the decisions that are being made are doing to the taxpayers. So just one last question, are we looking to hire Melanson Heath to do any of our financial work? Other than the audit that they do currently?
The, about two years ago, I'm going to get to your question and answer, about two years ago, I could see that the, some of the positions in town were, were almost impossible to work through, and at the, the, end of the year is June 30th, and the beginning of the year is July 1st, so there's a lot happening in the May-June-July-August period, and to have, to have services provided on a guaranteed basis during that period of time, it was important to change the contractual status. So we are going through that period now, what I assessed and evaluated a couple of years ago is happening now, we don't have an accountant, and May-June-July and August are very important months for the municipality. Right now, we have to get our work done, we need the Schedule A, we need the Free Cash Certified, we need to close out the year, and as Steven has stated, he's only here for a short period of time, so we have hired Melanson Heath to do the closeout for FY18. There is, they started, I think, yesterday, or close to it, they're going to close out FY18 for us, yes.
Are there any questions?
Where's that money coming from?
Accounting Department.
The 8,000 that's left over?
I haven't seen all of this, we've been working off these seven departments, but at some time in the near future, we can give you a copy of it, and you can check with the Steven, the Treasurer, and everyone else you'd like.
I'm just worried that the taxpayers are on the hook for all of this debacle that's going on, and we just keep spending money after money after money to try to solve the problem that was created, I don't, I'm a little, as a taxpayer and as a counselor, I'm frustrated that this was done with zero plan, and now we're trying to pick up the pieces afterwards, and now we're going to have a company doing our books who's then going to audit them, they're going to audit their own books, I don't, I don't understand how that's...
They are here especially to answer any questions the council might have, so would you like to speak to them?
I, it's up to the Chair what we do with who's being invited up, but I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how someone who is doing the books and being paid to do the books can then audit the books, because that doesn't seem right to me, that's a conflict of interest in my opinion.
Okay, that is your question, your main question, do you have the same question, Counselor Mass?
Madam President, my question would be specifically related to the Charter which requires that the Certified Public Accountant or firm of Certified Public Accountants have no personal interest direct or indirect in the fiscal affairs of the town and any of its officers, and whether or not they believe that receiving funds for the town to do work on behalf of the town is a either direct or indirect interest in the financial affairs of the town.
So at this time, are you wanting to check with legal and get back to council, or, I mean, you all can keep talking, but I'm...
The Representative from Melanson Heath are here, would you like to have them speak to that claim?
Well, if they don't know the answer.
Yeah.
I don't know if they specifically should come up unless they know the answer, if it's legal that they look at their own books, that's the question. If they say, "I'm not sure," then...
We know the answer.
If it's legal, that's the question?
Yeah.
Yes, it is?
Legal, yes.
My question isn't whether it's legal, but whether it's in compliance with our Charter.
Right, and I, my only answer to that would be, I suppose it would be how you interpret personal financial interest, so in other words, if I were to gain, it's my business, so yes, in your interpretation, or the way your Charter is written, and how you're interpreting it, a CPA that's doing your audit could not then do any other sort of consulting for you. That's, that's the interpretation, which is, which is unlike, you know, for example, we audit the town of West Frankville, whose Charter, I understand, yours is patterned after, and there isn't that interpretation, in terms of us, you know, we've done, for example, we did, we did work to help them computerize their Recreation Department software, the software that they used, that was a separate consulting engagement.
Okay, I'm sorry, and your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Patrice Scolanti, and with me is one of my partners, Tanya Campell, who is actually the one in partner in charge of the town's audit.
Counselor Alice, Counselor Mass, did that answer your question, or do you have a follow-up?
Well, they definitely answered the question in that it's subject to how you read the Charter, which, that's not an answer I think we're going to answer tonight.
Counselor Mass, I don't think so either.
I guess my question would be, can you give us then, if that is not a direct or indirect, in, personal interest in the financial affairs of the town, what is?
I don't, I don't, I guess I don't know how to answer that, if you use a company to do more than one service for you, yes, but both those things are a financial interest to my business, they're not a personal financial interest to me, I mean, it is indirect, but I mean, every business would be.
It's indirect to the firm, correct?
Yeah, it's direct to the firm and indirect to me.
Thank you.
Counselor Alice?
What is the contract total for this, for the services that we're being, that we're contracting for, other than the audit?
15 to 20,000.
15 to 20,000? So that's more than 8,000, which is what's left in the accounting budget, so I just want to get back to, where is that money going to come from?
Steven, do we have the compensated absences included in that bottom line?
No, we do not have the compensated absences, what I did was, I did analysis of...
Mike?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't think you can go that far.
Okay, what I did was, I looked at all the, some selected salary lines, and there are some salary lines that have significant overages, as well as some other unencumbered lines that have some significant overages, so you would have to look at doing a transfer into the Accounting Office.
Counselor Alice, and then Mayor Martin?
So it's a different line item, so that would be a vote of the council to move that money?
Exactly, that's an expense line, not a salary line.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we should be hearing from you again then, okay. I thank you all. Are we ready to do Public Safety Commission, or do any councils have any other questions? Okay, could I please have the team come up?
Why are we doing that?
For, because people have questions.
Aren't we going to discuss it?
But you don't, you don't have any more questions?
No, there are questions.
Then is it you, like the regulations?
I thought we were going to have them come up now, and then we were going to have our deliberation after we had the questions, I thought that's what's going on.
Oh, ask the questions?
I thought we were going to ask the questions now, and then have our deliberation and motions or...
Right.
Yeah.
Did you not want them to come up for some reason?
No, I just, yes, no, see, I added the order.
Counselor... Hmm?
Do you want the schools before, so they can leave?
Well, we can't, we would have had to do that in the very beginning.
Vice President Ricketts, point of information, I would, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules of procedure, order and disposition, so that we may have the Superintendent of Schools and the other folks who we're going to hear from come up prior to hearing from the Public Safety Commission team.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Abstain.
I didn't realize why you were asking, she said it, that's what you were...
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know that's what you meant, I thought you were like, why is the team coming back? Because Counselor Mass and Alice had more questions.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much, we appreciate you suspending the rules. This year? Yeah, sure. I'll start, from the School Committee table, there's just a couple of things to update you on. We've jumped into a self-evaluation, we'll be exploring the results of the self-evaluation at an upcoming workshop, that should be scheduled sometime this month, or in the next month. As well, we are in the middle of the Superintendent's evaluation, right now, member input is being compiled into one document, and we look forward to a formal meeting for the Superintendent's evaluation in the next week to two weeks. As well, we have offered a contract to a new Director of People's Services, Mr. Matthew Holloway, and we look forward to following up at that at the next meeting as well. At our last meeting, we also took a vote to affirm the prioritization of installation of swipe entry at some needed locations. We anticipate a start date of our work with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for Policy Review and Development to start on September 25th. And as well, the committee has endorsed an alternative high school program to be located at the Green River School location, the Superintendent is working on that. And as well, last but not least, we anticipate review of a revised budget for the FY19 school year coming up this month in September.
Hey, hello, summer's almost over.
So the School Committee Chair has touched on most of the points that we wanted to share with you this evening, but we are looking forward to an excellent start to the 18-19 school year, the summer does go by quickly, for parents at home, it may not feel like the summer goes by quickly, for those of us in the schools, we're looking forward to having students and staff back, we do have new teacher orientation coming up with a new slate of incoming teachers for retirements and other vacancies, the 23rd and 24th of August, all of our teachers are back for Annual Professional Development, the 27th and 28th, and then we always welcome families into our schools, we like to start the year right before students are in the classroom with our meet and greets, and this year, we're offering those all on the same evening, and they're staggered so that families can go to the elementary, middle, and high school level, and if you have multiple children in multiple buildings, they're not at conflict, so there's, throughout the evening on August 27th, and then students report on Wednesday, August 29th, and we're looking forward to having them back, and kindergarten starts with a half-day on Friday, August 31st. The School Committee Chair mentioned that the... The school committee chair mentioned that the school committee recently met. One of the things we're most excited about is their approval of an alternative education program at the Green River Building. That program has been programmatically approved by the school committee, and that means we are now into interviewing and posting for the ability to offer choice to our high school students, to retain our students, and make sure that we're offering them pathways and alternatives to prepare them for careers and the workforce in a way that is different than we can prepare them here in a traditional high school model. So we're really looking forward to that, and that work is well underway. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Counselor Stempel, and then Counselor Gilmore.
What is the status of leadership at the middle school?
So we've been doing our due diligence in terms of interviewing this summer. Unfortunately, we have had several, sort of on the positive side, we've had excellent candidates apply. The unfortunate side has been that the principal pool is competitive, and some of our top candidates have taken positions in other districts where salaries are higher. So we are continuing to interview. We have interviews scheduled again tomorrow and Friday of this week, and I've informed the committee that if a permanent and suitable candidate is not found, then we would look at interim leadership. No matter what, we are confident that we'll be opening the school year with strong leadership in place in one form or another, and trying to, it's a little challenging over the summer to maintain communication with families, but trying to make sure that they know that we're, we're really in good shape and looking forward to having students and staff back in the middle school in the fall. Thank you.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes, I wanted to know a little bit about this alternative high school curriculum. Is this going to be more vocational?
So we talked about it at length at our last school committee meeting. Our proposal for it is online and be happy to forward to the council a proposal as it stands right now, but we're now developing it a little bit farther and also providing materials for communication. So I think the tool that we use at school committee is not the best in terms of giving you a full sense of the program. Yes, it, there's a focus on technical education and career, but it is not a vocational technical program. It doesn't replace Franklin County Tech School, for example, and it doesn't aim to replicate it. What we're aiming to provide is something that doesn't exist here in Franklin County. We think it's a unique need, and we're working with the Department of Education to provide alternative credits for work-study, for internships, for opportunities for students to get hands-on experience right here in our community. So we're working with the employment board. We're trying to develop those relationships with employers and nonprofit agencies here in the community and have students develop pathways to graduation based on competency determination. So essentially, getting skills in the workforce and being able to show progress towards a portfolio through those skills. So it's flexible and individually designed.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Mass?
Thank you, Vice President Ricketts. First of all, I, I think you've already gotten the message from our clerk's office. You're invited, of course, to the next CRE meeting to discuss in more depth the future of Green River School. We're eager to hear that. I just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate you for the programming that you're doing at the community center related to robotics. Over the course of the summer, students are continuing to be engaged in the Greenfield School system, and I think that's a positive development.
Thank you. I'd like to give a lot of credit to Ms. Cummings, who's been the teacher that's working closely with that, and also our summer Title I program, which kept students from the middle school coming back to our elementary-level students and providing that kind of hands-on support and technical guidance. It's really through the efforts of individuals that are committed to the Greenfield Schools and committed to helping our students that are willing to go above and beyond every day, make our schools great, and thanks for that recognition of their efforts.
Anyone else? Counselor Sun?
I just want to congratulate you on being our superintendent for...
Yes, yeah.
Thank you very, thank you, Counselor Sun.
All right, are we all set?
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Okay. Where's she going? Okay. Okay. Okay, communications from GSET. I believe he's on vacation. Correct? Okay. Perfect. Okay. I'm sorry, what did you say? Okay, so we're going to go back now to communications from the mayor, and then he could bring the team up as well. She was throwing me off when she left, so I thought I was doing something else. Did the mayor even come up, or no? Mayor Martin and Mark Smith, are you coming to the table or no? Okay. Robin, since you did so well the first time, and we're all in attendance now, do you think you could tell everyone who is here? Who's here? Sorry. Oh. There you go. I worked it out. Or they can introduce themselves, whatever makes you feel better.
So at the table, or myself, I'm Robin Provost from Maury &amp; Schmidt, for those of you who do not know me. I have Billy Walker from Dyer Investment, who is the developer. We have Dennis Ross is from Pachica Ross, and he's the architect. AJ Bresciano, Vice President, Commercial Loans for the Greenfield Savings Bank. Butch Hawkins, the Chair of the Public Safety Commission. Everybody knows Chief Hague. We have Captain John Whitney and Chief Strands on vacation, and you all know the mayor. So can I just ask a question, a point of order question?
You could try.
So...
I could try to answer, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. So there are, and I, maybe the questions will come back to us, but there are a handful of items that were responded to incorrectly. So I'm wondering how we clarify those issues.
If you know what they are, if you want to start with the clarifications, then we can go from there.
Okay. So I would like to clarify and give a little bit more information on the actual RFP that came out. So the actual original RFP that came out did not have these drawings in there. There were no drawings in the actual first RFP that came out.
Okay.
There were only the space allocation charts that you have in your, in your packet. The second issue is the, the RFP came out requesting 50,000 square feet. The response that came back was in excess of 50,000 square p, square feet, excuse me, due to the fact that in the beginning, there was discussion on trying to find a way to reuse some of the existing facility that was there. In doing that, because of the layout of the facility, the square footage went up, and that was part of the higher not-to-exceed $22 million original RFP, excuse me, response to RFP that came back. So the original, back in, in August of 2017, there was a response to the RFP for not to exceed 22 million. Through negotiations in the RFP, which, which in the RFP, there's a section on page 15 that specifically says that after a developer is chosen, that there'd be negotiations. Then at that point, working down until today, a year later, we've come down to the 50,500 square feet. So, so you're not losing any square footage from the original request. It's still the same square footage. It's just that we've come down by giving you a completely new building, which now we can better use the space. And that's what, and that's what creates square footage change. So, so the square footage change brings down our cost, and the square footage change happens because we can give you a more box-like building instead of having the weave in and out of the building that is currently there that's now scheduled to be demolished. So, and so now the new, and then the new response has the 19.3 million not-to-exceed number. So it came down from the 22 to the 19.3. So that's just clarification for those two items. And I'm trying to think. I'm going to let Billy, there was a couple, maybe, maybe it'd be best if you asked some questions and, because some, you want that? Because I think Billy should answer a handful of the questions that were asked, so that you have a real clear understanding of that lease document, because I, I know that there's, there's some questions about that. And so I think he's best able to answer that for you, but through the question answers, I think.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Stempel?
I just have some questions, Robin.
Sure.
Based on when the RFP was submitted on May 3, 2017, the drawing that we have that is up there is dated October 31 of 2016, and I think that's where some of the confusion is coming from.
Yeah, so I think, well, I'm going to start speaking to that, but then I'm going to let Dennis do it, because Dennis has been working on the drawings. So I don't, I think that he, I, I believe that on the drawings, there's no revision dates, and that the original...
Those are dated July of this year.
Right, so those, right, those are not part, those were not part of the request for our, request for proposal, the RFP, nor were they part of the original response, because this is showing new construction. Whereas in the beginning, we were using part of the existing building, so the whole package is, was different at that time. This is new, this is new construction.
I guess our...
Just a...
Go ahead.
I think, just to reiterate the confusion a little bit more, is with the assumption of RFP, that's when we received the bidder, and then we had one bidder.
Yes.
So if this drawing was dated Main Street and Wells Street in 2016, how could we have known that we would only have one bidder at that time? Is that, does that summarize your question?
I think that summarizes one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you want to talk to that? Yeah, I think you have to. I don't know if this moves all the way over there.
I can talk without the mic. I believe what some of the date confusion might be is background. So in other words, when SVE came into the picture and drew their first outline of the site back in 2016, and then we borrowed that to put our plans upon, right? Those dates stayed out there because that was the date of their drawing, all right? And we just used it so that we could implant these things upon their drawing. I think that might be the confusion you're looking at.
Do you have a follow-up, or just, Dolan, Counselor Dolan, do you have a follow-up to that?
I'm still trying to understand this. So is that, or is that not a drawing of the building that you're proposing to construct?
That is a rendition of a building that could exist on that site.
Yeah.
That is correct statement.
And that is, this version did not exist before the RFP went out. This is a, this is a revised version.
Absolutely correct.
And who, who did those revisions? Was that with the $50,000 that Greenfield spent, or was that the developer who created this?
What Greenfield spent, right, on us, was to look at possibilities on different sites, all right, which originally included the entire site, all the way over the conway. It also asked us to look at ambulance service, which we did, and programmed that, and came up with space allocations and sketches to see what would or would not fit. There's probably been no less than 10 versions of different things that, that Greenfield has paid for, that answered questions and led us to this point, right?
Okay.
So it's all well, it's all money well-spent, because what you have now in your hands, which the town owns, is work product, it's usable, whether it be by us or anybody else. It is usable work product.
Thank you very much. That answers the question.
Counselor Mass, then Counselor Sun.
I'll defer to Counselor Sun. I have a serious...
Counselor Sun?
Yes, mine is on the finances. The percentage, the loan percentage, four point, four point something percent, right? Is there any way it could go lower?
And you're referring to like...
Yeah.
So the, the percentage I used in the municipal construction scenario was an estimated bond percentage. If the town went to a bond to do this project, and it's, it's, it's a very crude estimate, because of the fact that the structure of the bond can vary greatly being at, and as I noted in the document, it can be front-loaded, it can be back-loaded, which would impact the interest rate, it would impact all the tranches that are sold. So it, it's really hard to tell. So I had to look at it in an apples-to-apples comparison, in that if you were to finance this conventionally, this is what it would, would cost you, based on that, that four and a half percent rate.
Yeah, because if I'm going to go borrow some money, I want to get it as low as possible on interest rate. And I think anybody that is financing anything would go on the low end instead of high end.
Counselor Mass?
I have serious questions. First question, following up on Counselor Dolan's questions for the architect. Did you do any work on any, for designs to, for any other sites other than this site?
At different times, on the first study, absolutely, we were looking at other sites. All those sites have subsequently been sold. In the second round of work we did, like I said, we had looked at the entire block, as if we had room all the way over the conway, which we clearly don't. So we did do some work there. We also looked at, I don't have my directions, but I believe if you continue down well, as the site drops off, we looked at several properties that also, so the design has morphed onto many different sites. We've come back, it's flexed in many different directions.
I, I'd like to, thank you for that answer. I'd like to go back to where I left off in Ways and Means under repairs and maintenance. The, the way I read, to read the lease is essentially, the lessor, the developer is responsible for the walls and the roof, and everything else for maintenance and repairs and remodeling and fixtures is left to the town. The town is completely responsible for everything else within, for maintenance and repairs. Is that correct? The... There's a subordination clause in here, which is pretty standard in, in any commercial lease, and I certainly understand that, but I just want to make sure I understand, that I'm clear on this. We're making our payments not to the Greenfield Savings Bank. We're making them to the developer, and the developer's paying off the loan on the Greenfield Savings Bank. So if, and I'm not saying that you're going to do this, but if the developer were to choose not to pay off the loan, and the, the Greenfield Savings Bank were to foreclose on the property, what would the town's remedy be? Purchase out of foreclosure sale?
A requirement of our loan would be that it was sent to water.
They'd be sent directly to the savings bank. Thank you. And... The holdover provision of this is one month's written notice is, there's, for termination. Is there any possibility that if we reach the 20, if we don't purchase in 10 years, and we reach the end of a 30-year lease, and the developer terminates, which he has the right to do, could we move within one month? Is there any possibility of us being able to resolve that issue?
That's not an issue at all. I mean, you can have, you know, some, I'm seven, six years old, so I, I doubt that I'll be around here at that point. But as far as given, more time is not a problem.
That's negotiable.
That's not an issue.
Thank you. The... I'm skipping over a lot of questions I have, because they're relatively minor in comparison to the rest. comparison to the rest. Landlord has the right to transfer the town, the council, the property, the, the town has no, no rights other than a right of first refusal in that. Is that the, is that correct, that the developer can sell to anyone he wants a public safety complex and our only remedy is a right of first refusal that we have to exercise within 30 days?
You gotta act more than that. You got 30, you got 30 days. And then I think it's another 30 days.
I, I would suggest that the municipality can't act that fast.
Thank you.
It's not an issue.
It's negotiable.
Absolutely.
If the town were to choose to use a portion of this property for uses other than the public safety complex, if we wanted to put other offices in there, uses that aren't contemplated in here, that's negotiable as well? That's not, I know it's not in the lease, but that's negotiable? It is, okay. The value, may I continue?
Oh, please.
Oh, thank you. The, is it fair to say that the value of this property after developed will exceed the value, the cost of construction and the loan? Is that fair to say, that the val, the total value after it's done is worth more than the cost of construction and loan? We'd hope, right? So...
You know, if you're on a 30, about 30 million, I'm trying to speak, a $19 million loan, I certainly hope it was worth as much as it is. And I know the bank for sure expects you to be worth considerably more than $19 million. When you prepare, the other costs, if you, if you take it and the city bills it themselves, and I won't even address that, but I'm not sure that y'all completely understand that the savings that the city is going to accomplish by this method versus the other method. I think that's critical, if you understand that.
I appreciate that, and I, that's what I would've anticipated, which makes me confused. Why is there a clause in here prohibiting the town to take by eminent domain when, if we had to take it at by eminent domain, we would be taking it at that much heightened value?
I don't, I don't know that that's, that, that by eminent domain is what it's...
It's 22.1.
I don't think that's what it says.
It says tenant shall not exercise the power of eminent domain to take the premises or any portion of the premises.
Well, I think that that is, well, I can't, I honestly...
Is that negotiable?
Yes, it would be. I can't, I can't, I don't want to address that. That's a great concern. I'm just gonna just speak into him.
Yeah. I, I would put that in too if I was a developer, but I, the, the common sense business aspect, I would think it'd be to your advantage to...
Robin, move the mic to him, please. Just, cause it's televised, so they gotta hear.
So, in...
All right, now you gotta talk into here.
In Part G, Termination, Section 5-1, there, there's contemplation and always things, things go wrong, right? There's contemplation that this might not go through, and if it doesn't go through, the liquidated damages to the town, if the costs are excessive of what you expect them to be, is $1,000. The town has put, or at least $50,000 in, into this, probably, multiple, multiple appropriations. Do you think that $1,000 is reasonable liquidated damages?
Let me ask you this, you, what about the money I've put into it?
I, I don't know what, how much money you've put into it.
Well, it's, it's a whole lot more than that.
Okay.
I assure you.
But do you think it's reasonable to, that that's, the 1,000 is reasonable?
I do, and if we're gonna walk away?
Yeah.
Then we each hold each other's harnish and, and we walk away.
I mean, that's smaller than what I do on most residential homes in Greenfield.
Well, I mean, I didn't, like I say, most of that's boilerplate.
Okay. The, what, under 41, Section 41, the memorandum of lease to go on record at the Registry of Deeds, what happens if the tenant and the landlord don't agree on the memorandum of lease as, would that trigger the arbitration clause? Is that your understanding? You don't allow the lease to go on record at the Registry of Deeds, so you're putting a memo out. If the town and the, and you don't agree about what that memo should say, do you believe that triggers the arbitration clause or how do we resolve that issue?
You're asking me a legal question.
I am.
I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
I would refer that to the city attorney.
Okay. Is Attorney Quinn been negotiating this lease, Mayor?
He looked at it early on.
Has he seen this draft?
I don't know what he's seeing, but he's hoping to get something done up to him.
Sure. In Exhibit B to the lease rental terms, and I've seen this in a couple of places, there's discussion of $29,800 from an escrow agent. Can you discuss what that is? I, I don't know where that came from.
That's in one of the option letters. That's one that adjusts the option for the, the sale of the property, the, the police department property.
Oh, shoot.
Have we, have we escrowed our, have we already escrowed $29,800 is my question?
No.
No, 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 no.
The town hasn't.
The city's not escrowing any money. I'm, I'm escrowing the money.
You're gonna escrow that?
The city's escrowing the debt.
Okay. The, this is an adjustable rate mortgage, is that correct?
No, it's a fixed rate.
Okay, so fixed for 10 years?
10 years.
After that, it's adjustable? Or is there balloon payment on the end?
It's tied to, and I'll, I'll let AJ address that.
After that, it's adjustable.
After that, it's adjustable. And so, this, this lease, which is reasonable if you're taking an adjustable rate mortgage, has provisions for the rate to go up if interest rate goes up. It has no provision for the rate to go down if interest rates go down. Is that negotiable?
It is, this rate is tied, it's locked in, is it not?
For 10 years, but after 10 years.
For 10 years, right. Well, I assume that that could be paid off and renegotiated? I don't know. I mean, you're asking, here again, you're asking a legal question.
Well, that's solely at your discretion, so my question is, if, if you determine what the interest rate, we have no control over your negotiations with the bank, we, if you negotiate a lower, if you negotiate a higher interest rate and then we have to pay that higher interest rate, and then you negotiate a lower interest rate, we are still on the hook for the higher rate according to the lease.
I can assure you, pardon, I can assure you that'll never happen.
So that's negotiable?
Absolutely, you can put that in the lease.
This lease contemplates a purchase of the existing police station, is that correct?
That's true.
And, and that's a condition of the, of the agreement, the bid, the deal?
Well, that's, that's one of the options. It's not a condition, it's an option.
It's an option. I, I guess my, and I didn't see it as an option, I saw it as a condition, but even if, as an option, how is it possible that we can contract for the sale of the existing police station when A, we haven't declared it as surplus property, and B, we haven't, don't we have to follow state law regarding the sale of public land? We can't prefer one developer over another. So you're, what I understand is this guarantees us the option to sell for $1 million, but if we get another bidder for a higher value, we, we can sell to them? Is that, is that correct?
That's the way I read, yes.
Okay. Thank you, you've answered all of my questions related to the lease. There's certainly substantial work left to be done on this if we go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Alice?
Thank you. My questions are more the nature of the process by which this building is, is going to be built. We've gone round and round and round about the drawings. I still don't understand whether we paid for them or we didn't pay for them. They're very clearly drawings of this building, so if we paid for them, that's our work product and we paid for it, which means we have a significant hand in the development of this, this complex, which means that it does in fact fall under 149 prevailing wage. This document that we got about financing seems to me to talk about how it's going to be cheaper because we don't have to do prevailing wage. I'm, maybe I'm incorrect, someone can correct me if I'm wrong. It also assumes a 4.5% rate on a municipal bond, however, we haven't had a 4.5% municipal bond in, well, probably about 13 years. So I think that's high. Doing it apples-to-apples by using 4.5 over the term of the loan, when we bond, we would bond the principal amount and as we pay that off each year, our interest payment goes So that's how, that's how, that's how that would be if we were, if we were bonding. So I, I think it's, I don't, while I think you were, said it was apples-to-apples, you were trying to use the same formula that you use if, if it was the bank giving the loan. And, and you can correct me if I'm incorrect.
That's the only way I can look at it because the structure of every bond is different.
Right.
Depending on how many tranches are available for sale, depending on the maturity and the rate of each of those tranches, it's all gonna impact the interest paid and ultimately the cash flow from the town.
Right, and then, so, I appreciate you giving me this because now we can go to our, our bond advisor and ask them what a bond would be, and they could give us the information. I wouldn't expect you to have it because you don't, yeah. So, I have a, I have a feeling that if we ask our bond advisor what our bond would be on this building for this amount of money, it would be significantly less because bonds are, tend to be less than, you know, private financing.
Just to note as well, like, what's not included in there is the actual cost of the bond. Typically, that's a percentage of the bond that's loaded.
Yep.
So that would have to be built in as well, that's not included.
Yeah, and there would also probably be a bond premium that we would get back too, most likely, but not guaranteed. So, I believe this, so that gets back to my, the only reason I bring that part of it up is that I, I believe there's gonna be a legal challenge if we try to build this building and not use prevailing wage. I'm almost positive there will be a legal challenge on that. So I, just...
May I address that?
Would you like him to respond?
Sure.
Essentially, you bring that up, I have done this on three separate occasions with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I built, and, and the, the RFP was exactly the way, the same RFP that was issued by the city, that was issued by DKM for space in the same building that we're talking about. I responded to an RFP, just as I did this one. And not one time, and I did, it was not done under prevailing wage. I'm, I'm a private developer, I'm, and I'm not subject to it. And, and on top of that, I have assured the mayor that if it's challenged, I will defend it.
Okay, Counselor Alice?
So, I, I would like to inquire of, of the developer, one of those was in that building for the juvenile court, correct?
Yes, that was one, sure.
Yep. And they were always planning, even after they did the lease, to move back into the courthouse, correct?
I had a 15-year firm-term lease.
I understand that, but they were, after that lease...
At that point, no sir, no sir. At that point in time, I don't know that the courthouse was even in the plan.
It wasn't, that's... You're talking about two different leases. He's talking about the lease at the beginning that was 18 years ago versus the pre-lease.
Okay, what I'm talking about for the council is the fact that we are planning, it's, we've, everything that we've been given is talking about 10 years when this is a 30-year lease, which means we know full well that we are building this building for us and we're gonna stay in it and we're gonna buy it. You cannot, you cannot go around prevailing wage when you know that's the outcome.
Counselor Mass?
I, I think I heard something that was actually pretty encouraging. You're saying that you would indemnify the town from any litigation related to any claim of, related to prevailing wage?
That is true.
And would you also bond for that so that we ensure the money was available?
No, no, I would not.
So that, that indemnification is based on, on, on the assets that you have?
I'm not even sure it's bondable.
Everything's bondable for the right price.
I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
Counselor Dolan?
This is a general question for anyone. Can anyone identify a source of savings that's not related to not using prevailing wage? Is there significant savings that we're missing in this conversation?
You go ahead, you can start with me.
I'm encouraged to see that there are so many answers.
If you'd like a significant saving, far beyond, well, I think is far beyond wage rate or prevailing wage, whatever you wanna call it, is time, alright? A project done by a private developer or any private entity whatsoever, and I am in the public world a lot, the public world takes a long time, alright? So it, it takes RFPs, it takes review time, it takes, you know, Massachusetts bid law with subbids and then contractor bids, and then there's the timeframes involved. The whole thing probably takes two times as long as what it would take a private developer to do. That time alone with escalation and all the things that go into construction, design and all the work required, there is a huge savings difference in going privately versus publicly.
Counselor Alice?
There's no more questions on that. Triumph that, I'll move to the next. What was the process for developing the RFP? Who developed the RFP?
The RFP was developed by Dan Kelly.
Okay.
And we used the DKM RFP guideline, we used exactly the same one in the courthouse here. Both of them was the construction of the courthouse on Main Street, and we, our company has submitted a board on Main Street.
Okay. In the RFP, it states, well, actually, you'll get to that in a minute, I'll start with this one. So there's been talk of negotiations, that everything in here that was changed was negotiated. Who did that, specifically, who did those negotiations? Was there a committee involved? Was it a public meeting?
We'll be head to head with you. You wanna go to the task force after we get out of here? Can we state your question?
I, I, my question was, the negotiations, the planning, all of these different phases, we talk about the negotiation of changing the RFP and changing the square footage and whatnot, and we've gone over that, I'm not gonna go over that again, though I don't particularly think I got the answer. Who was on the committee that had any dealing with making all of these changes and planning of the building? Who were the people on that committee?
Well, that wasn't us.
A microphone, please, I'm sorry.
That wasn't...
After, after the RFP went out and came back, I believe the mayor said, well, the numbers are too high, you gotta get the numbers down, and they, so they went back and they looked at knocking the whole thing down and starting from scratch and building it. And they had a financial component, the mayor did, not us. We didn't have anything to do with that. So I can't, I can't answer your question as to, we weren't involved in the process.
So that, we being the Public Safety Commission?
Correct.
So there was no subcommittee or ad hoc committee of the Public Safety Commission?
Not looking at the financial side, looking at sites, looking at different, you know, possibilities that were, that might be available in town over 10 years, that was us, for sure.
So can you, can you tell me then, what were, what were those committees and at what times were they and who were on them, who was on them?
Well, it was the entire Public Safety Commission when we hired Dennis Ross back in 2010, and he came and met with us, and he came and advised us and stuff, and he came and met with a, a great number of people in town, the fire chief, the police chief, other members of the community, put together a very extensive package on what we have and what we need based on the professionals in the police and fire service. And that took a long time. Then we looked at six different sites, actually seven later on because we looked at the Western Mass site, as potentials, and we asked Dennis Ross to look at each one of those sites as feasibility and base, and rank them numeratically, prior, you know, proprietary...
Yeah, I know what you mean.
I know, I'm spitting it out, I'm sorry. Yeah. Prioritizing them, which he did. He spent a lot of time, he reviewed all those sites, I mean, to point to where all the money, a lot of the money went. He looked at all those sites as a feasibility for different public safety sites, and those included, you know, the Holy Trinity School on one side, the Holy Trinity Rectory and parking lot on the other side, it include Don Loren's property, it included the Friendly's site, it included the existing fire department site, and that's, and where else?
Silver Smith.
Oh, the Silver, yeah, the Lunt Silver Smith we looked at. And one by one, those, those sites got, you know, repurchased and repositioned and re- put out in the community. So we were involved in that part of it. Putting together the RFP, responding, any parts of the responding or any parts of the financial package of the RFP, we're, we're part-time unpaid citizens of Greenfield on a committee. That's, we're not professionals in finance, building, construction or design, most specifically about the complex building, construction and design that a public... most specifically about the complex building, construction and design that a public safety or a new fire station or a new police station would require. We didn't have anything to do with that.
Okay.
Counselor Mass. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. First of all, let me say to everyone who's involved here, I appreciate all of the work each and every one of you put in, and I know it's tremendous amount of work that's taken place over the course of years, both, and some people who get nothing out of this, that there's nothing happens, and other people who are going to go back to the drawing board if nothing happens. So I do appreciate all the work you put in. What I don't, so much of the decision-making related to this went into every other, and I've heard this multiple times, other sites got bought up. What, why does that matter to the town when we have the right to take any site we want by eminent domain? Why was the option to take, uh, property by eminent domain eliminated from the equation?
Well, I think probably, um, the simple answer is the timeline. How many years do you want to spend in court fighting, and how much money, how much of the taxpayers' money do you want to spend to fight those cases and then acquire property that's dilapidated, and then spend the money to knock these down, and who knows what the hazmat is, who knows what the, what, what kind of federal restraints you might be under to actually use the property after you've acquired it, because you can't survey it before you actually own it? I mean, how many years do you want to spend doing that? And what properties would you want to take? I mean, do you have a particular property in mind that you think would be in the center of our call volume, the police, and would be the most, uh, central to our business? Um, I mean, we don't, we don't have any idea about that, and we've been doing it for 10 years.
Well, you looked at a number of sites.
We did.
And, and I'm not suggesting any particular site. If I, if it was up to me, we'd put it on the Newton Street School, and we'd move the Newton Street School up to Green River, and we wouldn't be taking any property off the tax rolls. But my question is-
Well, how much would you want to spend to do that?
You, you looked at good, at sites that you thought were good, and the only reason you excluded them was because they were purchased by other developers. So your, your plan was only a purchase, you never considered eminent domain, that's correct?
No, we looked at those sites because they were available. They were all pretty much vacant and available, that's why we looked at those sites. And then later on, we looked at the, uh, the Western Mass site when it became available. The mayor asked us sometime later if we would look at, take a look at the pros and cons of the Western Mass site. And I think I gave him something like 16 cons to that site, and there were pros to it, for sure. But, there was- But, you're talking about five to 10 years from now on a process that you're talking about, what do you think a process, a product like that is going to cost? One, number two, within that time, you're going to have to deal with, with these serious issues in the fire department that are health-related, that are going to now come up, because we've made them public. I mean, really, should put some yellow tape around it and close it and move those people out of there. The, the police department could never be accredited. We could get initial accreditation, but after three years, and the chief can adequately speak to this, we will lose that accreditation because that building does not fit-
One second.
-the bill for a modern accredited police department. So it's, there's, it's complex.
Counselor Gilmore, and then Counselor Mass. I'm sorry.
I'm curious how long it would take to put in a Plan B, because I'm really not comfortable with anything I've heard tonight, or anything I heard at the last meeting. I'm really, I, the idea of going against prevailing wage, like, goes against everything that I believe in. I would never, ever vote for that. My constituents wouldn't want that. I feel, right now, pressured because I want the library, but I do not feel like this is the best thing for Greenfield, and I really would like to see people go back to the drawing board.
I can comment on that.
Sure.
I think.
Um, Counselor Mass, Counselor Alice, and Robin, would you like to say something?
Well, I was going to respond, is that okay?
Okay.
Is that on now? Okay. I just want to, um, give an example, just respond to the prevailing wage portion of that. And I want to just, um, let, let people know of a, a recent project that we just completed for DCAM, uh, for the district attorney's office. And that lease, um, is, is actually a 10-year lease, and there's a five-year renegotiation on that. And it was not, prevailing wage was not required. What, what Billy is saying is, is the truth on those leases. We, we do not have to pay prevailing wage on those projects. Now, we've done numbers of them, and you, the proof, I mean, our proof is there based on what we've done in the past.
Okay. Counselor Mass.
I would defer to my colleagues.
Okay. Counselor Gilmore, then Counselor Alice, then Counselor Dolan.
I'm not talking about the legality of going around prevailing wage, I'm talking about the morality of it. I'm vice president of my union, I know Counselor Gilmore is also a vice president of his, we have union members here, and the only reason that we can afford our tax rates and our, our property taxes that are always going up is because we're being paid more than minimum wage. I think it would be a terrible, immoral thing for us to do, to say, "We're going to pay someone's, a wage where they can't even feed their families, pay for rent, and we're going to ask them to build this with taxpayer money?" I really think that that is immoral, and I will not support it.
Counselor Alice, and Counselor Dolan?
So, yeah, I just want to get back to a question. Was there a public safety complex working group of the Public Safety Commission?
Um, no, there, but there were some subcommittees of two that would maybe work with the police or the fire. We didn't, we didn't have a-
So there were no-
We didn't have, like, a designated, I mean, we're kind of a loose group, we didn't have a formal, like, like you have a Ways and Means Committee, we don't have that.
So there were no committees that included people from the contractor and the developer? There was no, no committees ever that had that?
Committees from the Public Safety Commission, no.
Okay. Um, so, um, my, I think my, I think my final thought is, we're talking about a resolution, whether we want to proceed with a lease agreement or not. Uh, I've done a little bit of research, um, city of Medford did a public safety complex 39,000 square feet. It was done last year, and it was 15 million, and that was a public proj- uh, project. Granted, that was last year, and if you, the mayor always uses 4% as an increase for, um, construction contingencies, it's still clearly nowhere near, um, where we're talking about. Great Barrington in 2010 built an entire firehouse at 16,000 square feet for just over 5 million, and given the 4% increase, uh, each year turns to be about 7 and 1/2 So, this is, there, there's, um, this particular plan flies in the face of the spirit of pretty much every public works project laws that there are. And just because we can get around a lot doesn't mean that we should.
Counselor Dolan, and Counselor Wheeler, and Counselor Alice, I could come back to you.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Gilmore made my point very ably.
Oh, she did, okay. Counselor Wheeler, and then I'll go back to Counselor Alice.
Um, I can't speak to this, uh, directly because I don't have a lot of construction experience, but, I mean, the fact that an entity would not be paying prevailing wage does not imply that it would not be a livable wage, there's no correlation there. Prevailing wage, you know, was designed by the government to hopefully bring up all of the wages in the industry around it. I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm generally for, uh, union labor, and I would hope that that would be used on this, but I just want to say that the prevailing wage thing doesn't mean that it would not be a livable wage. And I have one more, um, point, just to, uh, the points that were made about other public safety complexes, the, um, city or town of Ashland, Mass, um, this year has a proposed public safety complex, 44,000 square feet, $30 million.
Counselor Alice, and then Counselor Mass.
Yeah, my, my last point was, um, we, we talk about taking the other things out of, the other things being consolidation of dispatch and the library, out of the equation. But the fact of the matter is, those two things were the driving force in creating this from the beginning. So, it, we were, at the, at the meeting of the Public Safety Commission on July 25th, um, we heard, oh, it's somewhere around 800,000 or 900,000, we're going to get that savings from consolidation of the dispatch department. You know, and okay, so that's got a good ring to it, 800,000. Well, then, comes this 1.373 to start, and that's way more. And the whole idea was that, you know, we weren't going to put this on to the, um, we weren't going to raise the taxes to do this. However, you put, you put this lease payment into, uh, into the operating budget. What do you think the first thing that's going to get cut, if we have to cut something, is going to be? Not the lease for this building, and that keeps going up. So the only other option is to either continue to raise money to keep paying it, or you have to cut other services. Uh, we were handed, prior to that meeting, um, this black notebook with much the same information, um, and a message from the developer. And that message from the developer is dated July 16th. Okay, didn't think anything of it. And then we get our next packet, and oddly enough, we have the exact same letter, but now it's dated August 3rd. Which means, before that meeting, clearly, everybody knew what it was going to be, yet we were still being sold something that was not correct. That sort of baffles me. And then, uh, furthermore, you get into this lease, and one of the most, um, important things I think that this lease says in it is number, let me find it, number 30, under Part J. "The parties intend for this agreement, for the agreement in this lease agreement to be a lease purchasing financing agreement, under Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), and the lease shall be interpreted consistent with that intent." Which means we're writing right in the lease that this is the lease purchasing agreement. Now, everyone might think that that's great, but that Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c) speaks specifically about real property, not real estate.
Sorry.
This-
It's a mouse, it's just a mouse.
Oh, this, this law that stated that this lease is supposed to be interpreted under is the same one we use for the fire engine, and the same one we use for the police cruisers. Has nothing to do with a capital asset, a real estate capital asset. So, we, we are going into this, we're being, we're being told it's a 30-year lease and that we have the option to buy, but we're going into this knowing that the whole point of this is to circumvent every other law so that we can do this cheaper. And, look, I like to do things cheaply, but I don't think this is cheaper, and I don't have anything to the contrary that has, that I can base it off of. I don't have anything from anyone that says, "No, this really is the best deal." I didn't, I don't have anything that says that. I don't have, I don't have anything from our bond counsel that says, or I'm sorry, our bond, um, advisor that says, "Oh, well, if you're going to do a $31 million pro, or a, I'm sorry, a, a $31 million project, that you, or 20 million, that you have to, that you will pay X amount of money." 20 million plus the, you know, the 18 that we have for the financing, so, there's nothing to go, there's nothing for me to gauge this against, which makes me completely unable to support it. If there was something to gauge it against, we might have a fighting chance. And it's not this council's job to negotiate leases. It is our job to get the lease in its final form, we can have input into it, but it's our job to get the lease in the final form, to look at it, have 30 days to review it, and then make the decision.
Okay. So, Counselor Mass, then Counselor Dolan, and I can come back to you, Counsel Alice, if I cut you off.
I don't have to.
I just want to take this opportunity to echo Counselor Wheeler's comments about prevailing wage, and to specifically go on record and indicate that Maury and Schmidt has an excellent reputation in this community for treating their employees, as well as their subcontractors have an excellent reputation in this community for treating their employees fairly, and I think they should be recognized for that. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Counselor Dolan?
Just a point of parliament, parliamentary procedure, it seems like we're straying into discussion and away from, um, the communications from the mayor, so should we move on, or just?
Are there, are there just any other, like, real questions that really need to be tackled before we talk about the resolution? So, I just want to thank everyone who came to the table. Um, I thank everybody for patience, I'm doing my best tonight, so I just thank you so much.
Okay. Give me the job, honey, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so I'm going to call on, um, okay. I'm just looking for my glasses, okay, okay. Okay, motions, orders, and resolutions?
motions behind the committee.
For the appointments?
Since you're chairing the meeting.
I move that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to Charter, Section 2-10 of the Town Council approves the following appointments by the mayor to the following boards and/or commissions for the express terms. Donna Woodcock for appointment to the Friendly County Technical School for three-year term expiring December 31st, 2021, and the reappointment of David Lewis, Board of Registars, three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Next one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, it passes. Then I'm doing this.
Number, page eight is Ashley.
Resolution for cons- consolidation, whoops.
No, this is-
Nope, sorry.
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council take from the table order number FY18-110 upon recommendation of Mayor Martin in order to appropriate from the building maintenance stabilization, maintenance stabilization for capital projects totaling $49,250, order that the Greenfield Town Council appropriate the sum of $49,250 from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund for the following purposes and amounts. Four corners school roof repairs, $25,000, school, school repairs to damaged trim work, $24,250, for a total of $49,250, which was tabled at the May 23rd, 2018 Town Council meeting.
All right, do we have a second? Take it from the table?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Take it from the table?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Okay, oppose?
No.
An abstain? Okay, so it's on the table.
Counselor Mass.
Counselor Mass, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice President Ricketts. This is a difficult motion, because I know our, this, this board would like to support the schools, but we heard several things tonight that lead, that make it impossible for me to vote for this. One is, we heard directly from the school committee that they set as their top priority for capital spending, swipe cards. That is their top priority, over this, over anything else. Um, we've asked the mayor to take this back and to change it to swipe cards and send us an appropriation, he has refused to do so. The second thing, um, that we got in the answer related to bonding is that the existing bonding that we have, plus the outstanding temporary bonding that must be converted this year, totals 10 point, over 10% of our operating budget, which is in excess of the guidelines for bonding. We are talking about many other projects coming down the road, the mayor can't tell us what bondings are, and what, what's coming off of bonding this year, we don't know how much money we have to work with, we don't have a finance director who can provide that information to us, because we're working with a temporary, um, staff, stopgap. It requires, I know this requires two-thirds, but- It requires, I know this requires two-thirds, but I actually, I'm ready to take this off the table, and I'm asking my colleagues at this time to vote no on this because we have, while this is important, we have other priorities, the school department has other priorities, and we have to start being careful about how much we're spending on bonding.
Is there any other discussion? Counselor Stempel?
Just a clarification. So this is moving from stabilization, we are not bonding, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's, that is correct.
And so I'm a little confused as to your discussion about caution with bonding when this doesn't have anything to do with bonding.
May I?
Counselor Mast?
Counselor Stempel is absolutely correct. This does come from stabilization, but stabilization is what we use as a stopgap. Stabilization is what is used to ensure that our bond rating is as good as it is by keeping reserves at over 5%. We've spent a substantial amount of our stabilization already in this last year, and anything to reduce that is difficult. You're right as far as that this particular item won't be bonded, but spending down the stabilization will affect our ability to bond in the future.
Any other discussion? Counselor Stempel?
Does anyone remember, gosh, may, does anyone remember how vital this was? I can't remember how much of a priority it was, if it was one, two, or three.
Council Alice?
I don't know what their priority was. However, they have stated that there are higher priorities that they wanted funded that were not funded. So I don't, I think the answer to your question I can't give you, but I can tell you that they say that there are other priorities that are higher.
Counselor Dolan, Counselor Wheeler?
I'm concerned that what the Chair of the School Committees and the Superintendent said may be being misinterpreted in this conversation. They said that their priorities as, those were not necessarily construction priorities. That was the priority that they've been taking up recently in their recent meetings. I don't think that that doesn't mean that this is a priority. It was rated a number one on this sheet that they gave us. Also, as somebody who has some experience in buildings, water damage is really serious, and I would be inclined to fix it before it gets worse, particularly considering the rain recently.
Counselor Wheeler?
I would echo what Counselor Dolan said. My understanding of the superintendent's remarks was the same. Looking back at our capital request, the trim work was rated a two in terms of priority, and the water damage issue was rated a one. I would strongly suggest that we take a look at, that we consider appropriating that amount, even if we don't want to consider the trim work.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I was referencing when we were dealing with this at the beginning because they did state what I just stated. I wasn't talking about tonight. I'm saying, when we dealt with this the first time, that was what they had said. That's what I recall them saying, so.
Counselor Mast, were you talking about what they were talking about tonight or back when Counselor Alice was speaking about it back in May or whenever?
Both. I think the school committee has been clear that swipe cards were their priority over the items that were pushed forward by the mayor's office. The mayor ignored their highest priorities as submitted to them by the school committee and the, and the.
Superintendent?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm supposed to be doing that. Counselor Gilmore?
So my recollection was also that we had sent this back, and the reason it was tabled in the first place was because we were hoping that the mayor was going to put the money into swipe cards, which that didn't happen. So I would suggest, I would like to make an amendment that we remove the damage trim work from this, and we just appropriate the $25,000 for the roof repairs because we're, that's, I don't think there's any way of avoiding the roof repairs getting much worse if we don't take care of it.
Second?
Okay. All right, discussion on the amendment? Okay, Counselor Dolan?
I just want to clarify, the trim work is around a skylight, and at least one, at least part of it is, so there is water damage to a roof in both cases.
Counselor Gilmore?
So Counselor Dolan might not have the answer to this question, but if it's around the trim work, do you know why it would be rated a two instead of a one like the other one?
Sorry, can't hear that.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay. We've, okay, I was going to vote on the amendment. Do you have one?
One quick question. It's a question.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I don't know if any counselors know how much we currently have in stabilization because without a finance director, I don't. No idea.
Okay, this time to vote on the amendment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose?
No.
Okay. Can we have a show of hands on that? Not that I'm going to see them, but all in favor? Raise your hand. And all oppose? Okay, the amendment fails.
Sorry.
I don't, I'm just listening, sorry.
The amendment passes, that was me.
So the amendment passes, and that's just to do the roof repair? Okay, so now, any discussion on the motion as amended? Counselor Stempel?
I think Counselor Mast brings up a great point. I don't feel comfortable spending anything in stabilization if I don't know how much is in that bank account.
So are you wanting to table it, or are you wanting discussion?
I'd like to move to table.
Second.
Not debatable.
Oh, it's not debatable, right?
Yep. So all in favor?
Aye.
All oppose?
No.
Okay. Show of hands, please. So all in favor, please raise your hand.
This one does not pass, so it's still on the table.
So it's still on the table at this point. Counselor Alice, then Counselor Mast?
I am not sure of the answer to this question. I hate to ask a question I don't know the answer to, but if this fails and is not tabled, can it come back as a request in any timeframe, or is there? I know that ordinances have nine months, I know that zoning is two years. I don't know if this, I don't know if this cannot come back.
Did you hear the answer?
Yeah, I mean, it could be an off-cycle request, not that I would be inclined to support that, I'm just saying. I only voted not to table because I wanted to ask this question, so I'm, I might be inclined to table if in fact it could come back with actually some information from someone I trust.
Counselor Mast?
Another reason, in addition to the fact that we don't have a finance director who can report how much is in stabilization to defeat this and just hold it off for next year, is this was sent to us in March. I believe it was contemplated that this work would be done over the summer. School starts in two weeks. If we appropriate this, this is an additional authorized appropriation that has not, won't be expended going into that third bucket of money that the mayor can spend at any time or ask us to reappropriate into a different portion that's on the books that may or may not get spent, along with wireless PA systems that still haven't been purchased. We begged them to send us back wire, a wire amendment for wired. We're not getting it back. Our only way, our only way of telling the mayor, no, we're serious, we want you to bring this back to the school committee and bring us swipe cards, when he refuses to do it, is to vote no and tell him we really mean what we're saying.
Any other discussion?
Is that a capital request?
Any other motions? Counselor Sun?
I just think what Isaac says is what should happen because we haven't got anybody as far as finances going, so don't know how much money we got, don't much, how much money we can spend.
Okay. No other discussion? Okay, so we're going to take a vote on the amended. Okay, want to just do a roll call vote this time?
Counselor Sun?
No.
Counselor Lovick?
No.
Counselor Alice?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Lenovich?
No.
Counselor Mast?
No.
Counselor Stempel?
A clarification, this is on the amendment, so this is the.
This is on the amended motion.
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts, it is a tie. Would you like to?
Okay, it's a tie.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
You don't have nine, so it's not going to pass anyways. So it's a tie, you've got five and five. You can vote, but you need nine to pass it.
Okay. We need nine to pass.
It fails.
So it fails.
Yes.
Was it five to five?
Five and five. So we can vote to 21.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-one. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council approves the attached resolution titled Resolution for the Consolidation of Public Safety Services. Majority vote required.
I have a second. Discussion?
The committee report, we were two for, two against, and both sides were dependent on further discussion. They just had different ways of going about their vote.
Okay. All right, so I understand. So it was two and two until we had more information tonight at that vote.
No one had their mind made up, but.
Okay. Counselor Gilmore?
Just as a point of order, I just wanted to ask, when we're voting on this resolution, if we vote no, we're telling the mayor that you need to find another way to, if we're voting no on this resolution, am I correct that we're telling the mayor that he has to find another plan and that we're not supporting this plan? Is that, as long as I try to understand what we're voting on.
Counselor Alice, unless Counselor Stempel, I'm sorry.
So the, oh, so the resolution, what we're voting, we're voting on the text of the resolution, and it's a resolution, and our resolutions are advisory. I should think you would take this as more than advisory when you vote, but the now-therefore portion of it is really the part that mattered, the part that is our advice, which is, "The City Council of Greenfield, Massachusetts supports the continued efforts of the mayor to negotiate a lease of a public safety complex." So that's, that's the very specific, like, I'm pretty sure that no one disagrees with most of the whereas's. I mean, I think, I think that we all understand that the firehouse is in need of a bomb or whatever. Sorry, that was, it's just very, it's in bad shape. I'm sure that we've all, we all agree on that. I'm sure that we all agree on many of these points. So all I'm saying is, when we vote on this, our, it's asking for our directive to him to accept or ignore, and what he does is, I wouldn't, couldn't tell you what he's going to do.
Counselor Dolan?
So what I would really like to see with this, I don't necessarily want to throw this plan away until we have more information. What I would really like to see is for this to continue to be negotiated and for a Plan B to be brought to the table. I don't know if there's any way that we can change the language to encourage the mayor to do so.
So I'll speak to my no vote at the Ways and Means. I'm still a no because I, I now, I now have more information than I had when I came in today on a project that we're supposed to spend between 31 and 60 million dollars on, depending on how long we're there. So when this resolution came to us to begin with, it was May 30th, we got this in email, and I had a three-page document I sent with questions. Those questions were all simple questions that could not be answered for two months. And I don't, I don't understand why that happened, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I feel that this resolution, had we, had we, had we not questioned it at the time, would have, we'd be sitting here tonight and we'd be getting, well, you voted the resolution, so you got to vote the lease. And so I'm not prepared to pigeonhole myself into this resolution for things that are so fluid that I can't even get answers on that make sense to me about the drawings, when they were done, who paid for them. I think I know what happened, but I'm not able to get those answers answered in any way that makes sense to me. I don't have a comparative study of what it would be to bond, which I think is very important to have. I don't have, still don't have very specific answers to the questions that I asked. I know we did receive some answers, but those answers were somewhat lengthy and somewhat unresponsive to what the questions were. I further, we have had, we have talked about, we have talked about the library project and how it affects that. We have a huge document on the library grant application in front of us that on page five, there is a statement, and I need to, I need to read it. I'm sorry, it's page seven, that says, "Mayor Martin has assured the library that even if Town Council does not approve the plans for a new public safety complex, he will move the fire department to a temporary location to make way for construction of the new library." I specifically asked that question in my response to this resolution, as to what that, what that process was going to be and where they were going to move to, and the answer was, there's no contingency. And then I asked that question here on the record at last month's meeting, to which he answered again, we don't have a plan to move them. So I'd like to know what we're getting for truthful answers because clearly the library was told an answer to put into their grant application that was not true. Whether it was not true then or not true now, it doesn't matter, it's not true. I'm very, I am not able to trust the answers that I'm getting in most cases. I'm not able to get answers that are making sense. I can't, I cannot support this resolution because I cannot support the lease, and I cannot, I cannot feel confident that I'm getting any answers that are the truth.
Now, is this the resolution we received at the beginning of the month, or is this the one we received on August 14th, the revised?
Well, point of order, the resolution that we, or point of information, rather, the resolution that we have in front of us is the resolution, the initial, the original resolution, unless someone's making an amendment to that, because that was not at chairs and it was not submitted to us prior to the meeting. it was not submitted to us prior to the meeting, if there's three objections, we can't take up the modified version.
Counselor Dolan, Counselor Mass, anyone else?
I'd like to hazard an amendment. I'd like to amend the last line on the printed page to read, "Efforts of the mayor to negotiate the lease or construction of a public safety complex."
Anybody?
Okay, did everyone hear that amendment? Okay. Counselor Stempel, you second it? Okay, Counselor Mass?
If the resolution were to say construction only, I might be in favor of it. I believe that we need a public safety complex. I haven't always believed that, you know, I was here, by the way, when we built the addition to the firehouse, I was on the council that approved it, and I was here on the council when we bought the existing police station, and we were told they were both gonna last, well, the fire station, we were told, about twenty-five years, but the existing police station, we were told, would last much longer. And it appears that they're both holding up to that level. Nothing that we do here is, I think, is a reflection of any member of the council on the great employees we have in both the fire department and the police department, many of them are here today, and I appreciate your service. I think it makes sense to have a public safety complex. I've long advocated to have a single elementary school where, cause when you have a roof that goes down, you only have one roof to fix instead of three roofs to fix, you know, like, there are some economies and savings that come with a public safety complex, that is why that is the trend across the Commonwealth and across the country, so that there, there's good reason for that. I've even bought, I've even come to, come around to the idea of bunk houses where firefighters sleep for part of their shift, which I was long objected to, and I, I've come to accept that and I, I see the efficiencies there. I almost got on board with this tonight, because I don't have the same object, political objections that some of my colleagues have to not paying a prevailing wage, you know, if we can do it less expensively for the taxpayers, I don't mind that. My concern is all of the projects that were cited that have been done locally for D-CAM have been projects that were not tear downs and complete restructure, rebuilding, including the Winslow House, which was just done by the Housing Authority, they were not complete tear downs and rebuilds according to specific instructions that were developed by the town for a specific use. I, I think whether or not it's successful, that this project is likely to draw a challenge on prevailing wage and certainly need to be litigated. And when I heard that we'd be indemnified by it, if I thought at the end of the day we weren't gonna have to pay out even if, even if we lost, I was almost ready to be on board, but without a bond, I have no guarantee that the, the means are there to actually sup, to, to support that indemnification, you know, a bankruptcy wipes out any, any indemnification, and so that guarantee isn't at this time at least strong enough for me. I don't think that, I think that this was pushed through for two reasons in this format. I think it was pushed through because of an aversion to taking property by eminent domain, and I understand that, no one wants to be involved in adversarial process, but most of that aversion is, was related to the timeline, how long it would take. I think the timeline is being driven by the library, I think this is, that is the tail wagging the dog in this case, and I think there are other sites that are better for construction, and it could be this, this site, the landlord need not, the developer need not develop, he can sell the property to us and we can develop on our own, and if that's what we wanna do. Of course, the mayor would have to negotiate that purchase, but it can happen now. I, I am not ready for a lease because I just don't think, the other, the other real strong objection I have to lease is it takes only seven members of the council, a majority to enter into a lease, but ten years from now, it takes a supermajority, takes nine, nine members of the council to vote to bond for the buyout. And so we are being strong-armed into what should be a nine vote, nine-member vote of the council for a bonding with a seven-member vote on a lease, and it is just, the, the proposal works its way around the council in the same way that it works its way around the prevailing wage, and as a counselor, I don't think that's appropriate. So I, I'm not for the amendment as it stands, but I appreciate the sentiment behind it.
Counselor Dolan, Counselor Stempel, and I'll come back to you if I cut you off.
Just to clarify, the purpose of the amendment is just to keep all options on the table for the time being, I would love to see other options presented, I don't have an interest in killing this current proposal now, I would really like to gather some more information from several different perspectives before we move forward.
Counselor Stempel, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanna echo Counselor Dolan's sentiments, I agree with David Moskortolo, who has retired from our meeting, as many other people have, I think this project has become a case of another lack of early involvement in the council, and I don't want to punish this plan because we see this happen to us time and time again. We nearly had to vote down a community center because this was the behavior that we saw before, but we rallied, we came together, and we created a plan that we could all agree on, so I don't want to see this very viable plan, I'd like to see it abutted to some other options. We're all curious about the purchase, you know, maybe that isn't the best plan, but we don't know, so it doesn't make sense to say no to this right now if we don't know what else is out there. And I also wanna make sure that I, I am in favor of the other amendment, removing the library piece, because this project started in 2007, so we can't, we can't say that this is being pushed through because of the library, it's been going on for more than a decade, so I can't quite agree that this is contingent upon a library at all, I think we see fifteen million dollars in repairs coming through the pipeline. So are we gonna keep rehabbing crappy buildings, or are we gonna do something about it? I, I am for Counselor Dolan's amendment, and I think it would resolve a lot of our uneasy feelings that I'm hearing from my fellow counselors about this plan, which, like I said, could be very viable.
Well, speaking of Counselor Dolan's amendment, could you tell us again exactly what it's?
Yes, so the last line on the page will read, "Efforts of the mayor to negotiate the lease or construction of a public safety complex."
Counselor Mass, that has what you wanted in it, right, the construction piece, or did you wanna add that in, did you wanna say more of that?
I, I'd like to see the lease removed, but I, I understand Counselor Dolan's amendment as it stands.
Counselor Wheeler?
If I might suggest a friendly amendment to the amendment?
As long as it's friendly, yes.
Would you consider scratching, as suggested by the mayor, the paragraphs, let's see, three and four, five, six, seven, referring to dispatch and to the library?
Is everyone following along with this?
I was planning to introduce that as a second amendment, I was planning to tackle them one at a time, I'm open to whichever.
Okay, so, we, before we have discussion on that, I just wanna, does every, is everyone following where he, Counselor Wheeler is right? Okay.
So just to clarify, I'm, this is a friendly rejection of your friendly amendment, and then we'll do that next.
So I was gonna just ask if someone's in favor of that friendly amendment, so that'd be a no.
But it's friendly.
It's friendly, no. Okay, Counselor Mass first.
So back, little back of the napkin math for counselors. One million dollars is about, would come out of the operating budget to support a lease, or at least this lease as proposed, that one million dollars represents one fortieth of our operating budget approximately, forty million dollar operating budget. We had a citizen who was before us today talking about having just moved to Greenfield, having a tax bill of over six thousand dollars on a home that's smaller than the one she had in Beverly, which is a very affluent community that was less, her tax bill was less. For that particular taxpayer, a one million dollar lease, lease added, one million dollars added to the operating budget without any corresponding cuts, would add approximately a hundred and fifty dollars to her tax bill each year, and that doesn't include the escalators that go with this proposed lease. A hundred and fifty dollars may not seem like a lot to a lot of people, but when we add it to the money that, the little bit we added on for the community center and to the little bit that we added on for the seniors, for the high school, it starts to add up to be some real money, and we're doing this without any long-term planning about what our bond picture is gonna look about, we have no finance director, we're projecting that, there's a projected buyout in ten years, this is, that, that buyout, by the way, will add more than a hundred and fifty, that'll add on top of it, cause we'll have to bond for that. It is, hopefully it will be, you'd hope it'd be a wash or close to a wash, but it, it's a lot of money to add to the tax rolls right now. I, I hope that we, I, I would think we'd want to have a better picture before we made any decisions, and I would suggest, well, I'll hold my, my, my final comments till after the amendments voted on, cause they don't pertain to the amendment, but I would hope that we would not include a lease in this.
Right, I, yeah, I just wanna add too, before I get to Counselor Stempel and then Counselor Gilmore, is, yeah, I hope that there's some way that we can work this out that we don't just discard this whole plant and this whole idea, I mean, it's not like the fire station is going to get better, so it, that needs to be new, no, no matter what, and so whatever we can do to make that happen is what's most important and forefront in my mind, and whether it's in this community center or it's standalone somehow, I think the serious, we need to be really serious about that and know that they're being heard about the condition of that building. So let's get back to the amendment, I'll let Counselor Stempel speak.
I just wanted, the math that was presented before us, whether or not we bonded or leased, it's gonna add something unless we can find, I, I wish, so we've been, I've been here since six o'clock, it is going on eleven o'clock, I wish we as a council could spend this much time talking about economic development and marketing our town instead of how we can nickel and dime citizens and the needs of the people who serve our community, I'm just gonna leave that there. Secondly, I really think that we should leave all options open, because either way, unless we do spend time doing what I before mentioned, we will be adding, whether it's a bond, whether it's a lease, so I think we're opening the door to have the comparisons that we've all been asking for with Counselor Dolan's amendment, and I'm gonna support it, and I encourage you all to support and continue the conversation as well.
Counselor Gilmore?
I was just gonna say that I originally was thinking I would vote against this resolution, but I, I like Counselor Dolan's amendment, but I just want to publicly state that supporting this resolution does not mean that I would support a lease, and I really cannot imagine a scenario where I would.
Sorry, I'm really lost for a second. I thought Counselor Sun wanted to talk.
Yes, could he possibly read out the whole amendment, you know, the way it's written, so everybody can really understand the what, how it's gonna go?
So the last paragraph, "Now therefore, the City Council of Greenfield, Massachusetts supports the continued efforts of the mayor to negotiate the lease or construction of a public safety complex."
Any final dis, okay, go ahead, Counselor Stempel, I thought we were gonna take the word lease out, but no?
I was going to, but I think we're ready.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? So do we have one abstention, one, so that passes? All right, so now we're going to vote it? Okay, we're gonna vote the resolution as amended unless there's more discussion. Counselor Dolan and?
I'd, I'd like to.
Counselor Alice and Counselor Mass.
I'd like to make that second amendment as, as promised, removing the third and seventh paragraphs, the third whereas and the final whereas from the resolution.
Do I have a second? Counselor Stempel? Discussion? Did you, you wanted to speak before that resolution, right? Okay. Did anyone wanna speak on that resolution? Okay. Okay, gonna vote for that second amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Two noes? Abstentions? Okay, it passes. Okay, Counselor Mass first, I guess, right?
I wanna appeal to my colleagues, the mayor is specifically looking for direction from us today, and if we pass this with, we're keeping this option on the table, but we want you to pursue something else, that is not really giving him the direction that he's looking for. The direction is, does, do we go forward with this lease, and if we're not for the lease, we should get, we should do the courtesy of all people who are involved in this, letting them know that and letting the, the people, good people of the Public Safety Commission, our, our department heads, go back to the drawing board, if, and, and let the developer and the bankers and the contractors off the hook so they don't have to spend any more time working on something that's not gonna happen, we shouldn't just spin the wheels for no reason. If we are in favor of the lease, we should just say so and put it forward. I can't get behind this lease because one million dollars a year is the amount we cut from the community center, and we're gonna spend that not one time, but every year for ten years, and then we're gonna pay for this building. It is an extraordinary amount of money, and that is if, that is all, that doesn't count the escalator clauses, and that is all if we are lucky enough to purchase it in ten years and not get hit with a lawsuit on prevailing wage, in which case we're paying even more, either for litigation or for, God forbid, we lose that case. I think it is an expensive proposition as put forward, and though while I don't have a problem with the issues related to prevailing wage, I know that this is a relatively progressive community, and even if it's not a majority of the community, I would say a good forty-five percent of this community is strongly opposed to any contract that wouldn't be represent, prevailing wage, if not more, and I don't know if we on behalf of the entire community wanna take a statement that, like that, when it puts us, I mean, if it puts us at risk for litigation, that's one thing, but even though it's not my morals, I have an opportunity... even though it's not my morals, I have an opportunity, I do have an obligation to represent the entire community. I'm an at-large council, I represent more than just the 51% of the people who elect me, or maybe more than that, but I think I have to represent people of a minority interest in this community. And while I don't think this serves those people who are concerned about taxes, and I don't think it serves those people who are concerned about prevailing wage, I think we should send a clear message to the mayor, vote this down, let him go back to the drawing board. They've heard from us that we want a public safety complex, just not a lease.
I'm going to address a couple things. The community center that we've held our last meeting or two at, to my understanding, was not built using union labor. I don't know how I would have voted at the time. It would have been a hard vote. I think that in general, it's hard to take a hard and fast stance. Normally, I would vote against something like that, but I would just say, we, there may not be a perfect solution. And then in terms of this bigger issue, there's been a lot of negativity tonight focused on details. To me, we're debating a resolution that should be a bigger, kind of a zoomed-out issue. You know, if I start this discussion from the top, I start with, there were a lot of smart people here tonight, who have been working on this issue for, from what I understand, a decade, who have a proposal put forward with a beautiful rendering of a public safety complex on Maine and Wells, that I think would transform the block, that took details from other notable architecture in the city, that takes the, an actual element of the fire station and moves it. I think there's a lot of originality that has gone on into that design. I don't want to throw that out tonight. I want to at least continue to consider it. At the end of the day, what we're talking about is $30 million for this building, as opposed to $15 million to improve two subpar locations that we are not happy with right now.
Is there any more discussion? Counselor Leonovich.
Thank you, Counselor. I've only been on the council for three years, and I cannot tell you the amount of times that we've been pushed up against the wall and given two options, either vote for what's in front of us, hold your nose doing it, or vote for something you inherently know is a good thing, but can't get behind the principles. This is another example of just holding our nose and not being, being, given any options or being, like Counselor Stempel said, included in the discussion, or the process prior to, so we can have input. I've said it, I don't know how many countless times, whenever anything comes before EDC, the best thing to do is to get before EDC, get to the, the public hearings, have your voice heard, so that a change can be affected before you're put up against a time crunch, or, or you're put up against the wall. Again, we haven't done that, and, and I feel like if we let this go, as, especially as it stands, it's just going to happen again, and again, and again. So as it stands, I can't support this, this resolution as, as it is.
Okay, so we have an amended, an amendment on the floor, and we're discussing the amendment. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. The amended motion, okay, good. Further discussion on the amended motion? All right, I'll, I'll speak. I was going to speak very briefly. I can't support it for all the reasons that I've already stated. I can't support it taking out and creating, and creating the, I can't support it having taken, are we, do we, are we good? Yeah. Let's, let's take a five or 10-minute recess for right now. We'll, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll be back in five minutes. So it continually happens, and I just, I can't support it. So was there any further discussion before we take a vote? All right, so we're voting on the amended motion. Is everyone clear on that? All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Okay, so that motion carries with one, one no and one abstention. So now, we are moving on to page 24, which is, yep, so that's Counselor Stempel.
So what happened there?
It passed.
Sorry, I was getting some gum.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to sound like, I'm just.
No, you're fine. I'm starving, so I'm going to eat my gum. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to Section 5-11 appoint the firm of Blum Shapiro for the purpose of an outside audit.
Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Stempel, report from committee.
Our understanding, actually, I'll have you explain the rationale for this entirely, but we were a unanimous positive recommendation.
I can actually have Counselor Mast do that while I'm sitting in his chair.
The rationale for this was essentially that our current auditor has been auditor for the entire time, that we've been a city we're very close there to, and that we've gone through the loss of two financial directors within a year, and that essentially it's a best practice to have a clean look under the hood by someone who hasn't had a long involvement during that kind of a transit, after that kind of a transition. I think it became, we are required by the charter to take an action to make an appointment. I think it became clear tonight that Melanson Heath is not eligible for that appointment, because they do have an indirect and direct in, financial interest in the budget of the town, because of the mayor's contracting with them, and they're an excellent firm, and so I have, I'm glad that he's made that choice to contract with them to deal with our final year-end auditing, or year-end financial matters. It is, hopefully, when you have an audit, it comes back and says there's nothing wrong. And so it shouldn't matter who the auditor is, but it should be as independent as possible. That's why I brought this forward. I would just ask for a friendly amendment to add the language, and send the mayor an estimate of $50,000 to $52,000. That is the ballpark that I was given by Blum Shapiro. Last, last year, our quote was $49,000. Blum Shapiro is on the state bid list, so we don't need to bid for that, even though it's in excess of $50,000. Is that accepted as a friendly amendment?
Oh, is that accepted as a friendly amendment? You made the motion.
Because we're required to send him a net cost estimate.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, yes, that's accepted as a friendly amendment.
What, can you repeat that?
And, and send the mayor a cost estimate of $50,000 to $52,000.
Did you, did you hear that the current one is 49 for the last year? I just didn't know if you heard that or not. Okay. Further discussion? Seeing nothing, all of them? Yep.
I just want to clarify, I think I understand the purpose of this, but what do we hope to do with the outcome?
Counselor Rust.
Well, we're required by state law to have an audit every year, and we're required by our charter to have an audit every year. Hopefully, we won't do anything with the outcome, because hopefully the outcome will say that we're doing everything the way we should be doing it, and there'll be nothing to do with it. We will just have built confidence in the community that our finances are being handled correctly. If there are recommendations from the auditor that, that certain practices could change, hopefully those would be something that the mayor's office could implement, or that we could at least inquire about.
Further discussion?
I just.
Go ahead.
I just feel, I'm going to support this, but, because I think where we are at right now, it's necessary to do something like that, in terms of finance director and lack of other department heads. However, I just want to note that we, we tend to have no problems, like, throwing 52 grand at something that's basically micromanaging town department heads, when 50 grand, we can't spend 24 to fix trim work on a school. So I just want to check and, check balances on how quickly, like, to me, $52,000 seems like a hell of a lot of money. But, so, I just wanted to make that statement.
Seeing nothing, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next motion, page 25, and that is Ashley again. No, it's not. Oh, no, this is Counselor Mast, yeah. Sorry, forgive me.
Move that the Greenfield Town Council take from the table, order fiscal year 2019-017 to amend the code of the town of Greenfield, Section 364 Public Lands, two hours of operation by adding the words Town Common, after the words Town Common and before the words Conservation Land. The words municipally-owned property along Kimball Drive off Colrain Street, known as Wedgewood Gardens, and further by adopting the following ordinance, in ordinance for the preservation of the Town Common, which has been, was tabled at the August 2, 2018 Town Council meeting.
Is there a second? All right, fails due to lack of a second, so it will remain on the table. 31 is not happening. We are not having an executive session. Yeah, that's been postponed until the next council meeting. Presentation of petitions or similar papers? Papals? Any popes here? Reported committees? We should just skip that. Unfinished business? We don't need to do that. Do you have some unfinished business, or do you have a report?
I, I, I'm curious. Point of order, I suppose. If I wanted to take something off the table for next month, that's like unfinished business, or do I just bring it to chairs?
So you were looking to take something off the table for this meeting, or you want to do it next month?
It's 11:00. We'll do it next month, but the remote participation.
I would go to, to bring that to chairs. Submit it to chairs five days prior to the meeting, at least five days prior to the meeting.
So that's, I would bring that back.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Any, any more unfinished business?
On the Town Common, that goes according to the, the people there, goes according to what the Health Department says?
As of now, that's what's going on. Yep, the Health, the Board of Health has, the Board of Health has very significant jurisdiction, and has very significant power when it comes to doing a lot of things, and they're basically a quasi-law enforcement organization. So they, as we heard earlier, what was issued by the Board of Health is enforceable through specific, specific means, court means, so.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Yeah. Old business, new business?
I have some potential new business.
Counselor Dolan.
The, the resolution that was circulated earlier today. I don't know necessarily whether I want to bring this to the floor tonight. I know the mayor just stepped out this very minute. I will say, I'm a little disappointed. We had two emergency council meetings related to the situation of homelessness on the common in the last month, and then we, it kind of barely came up as a, as a topic of conversation. I just want to emphasize that the, the ruling by the Board of Health is not a solution, and I'm very much engaged in the process of kind of throwing all of the spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks. This resolution about the state of emergency was my first attempt. There are a few things in the works. It's something that I'd like to bring up in a collegial setting with Mayor Martin, but he's not here, so I guess we'll leave it for another time.
Counselor Stempel?
No, I'll just.
Okay. Any other new business? Seeing nothing, any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? All is in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, we're adjourned at 11:05, 11:15.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.